Okay, everyone, good morning. Our April 6, 2016 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being recorded as well as presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2. Our close caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, customers of CenturyLink, they may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002. And some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box, they may view this meeting on digital channel 69.9. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov on our brand-new glorious website. Please go look. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of these chambers out to the mezzanine, proceeding out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, the clerk's office, or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please see the city clerk's staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by security officers when exiting. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation this morning given by Pastor Benny Jack's Victory Outreach Las Vegas and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
If I could have every head bowed and every eye closed, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you this beautiful morning, God, just giving you all the glory, Lord. And, God, I thank you first and foremost, God, for everything that you've done, your protection, God, upon this whole nation, Lord. And, God, I just pray right now for the mayor, my God, and her consul, and for everything that's going to transpire here this morning. God, I pray that you would grant him illumination, enlightenment, discernment, God. Father, everything would go according to order, Lord, because we know that you're a God of order, Lord. And we thank you, God, for everything that's going to transpire here this day, God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And we will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of our agenda. What a nice audience. It thins when we get down to business. Thank you very much for the invocation this morning, and it's an exciting time. Anybody who's watching television in these debates? Shall I ask for any comments? No. Is there anybody here who'd like to make a comment?
I would nicely.
Oh. Okay, so much for politics, right? Art thou coming with us? Who else are we? Not you. Mr. Barlow. Councilman Barlow. Okay. You're worth waiting for. Today. Today. And I haven't checked with your wife, so maybe not. I don't know. Oh, what are we up to? Okay, here we go. Takes a while for seven of us to get organized. We got it together.
We're dialed.
Okay, here we are. So our first item, we do have Councilman Ross, who I thought there was something about your knees, but I can't see him, which I think is a blessing. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it's that time of year again that we do this every year. And before I do that, I've invited some very special guests, all of you actually very special guests, but I've invited some really special guests to me. The Las Vegas Firefighters Local 1285 Honor Guard exists to honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in order to protect the lives of others. The fire service loses an average of 100 firefighters each year in the line of duty protecting the people of this great nation, and our Honor Guard has participated in their memorial since its inception. The Honor Guard wears black to mourn the loss of our fallen brothers and sisters. They wear red to remember the blood shed to make our community safe. They wear white to reflect the purity of heart required to risk your life to save others. The Honor Guard is all volunteer, receiving no pay for their efforts to reflect the purity of their mission. To carry on the tradition of the fire service, the most noble of professions, to honor those whose lives and sacrifice have defined us all.
Las Vegas Firefighters Local 1285 Honor Guard. Attention! Halt! Carried. Coaches. Drum Major, by your command.
Pipe band, four-four. About to set up. Quick march.
Mark time! Four! Four-one! Four!
Will the audience rise, please?
Center, face! Order, up! Right, face! Drum Major, by your command.
Pipe band, three-four. About to set up. Quick march.
Four-one!
Thank you, please be seated. All of those guys are all volunteers. They do not get paid to do that, and I think it was just the appropriate way to start this meeting off today. Mayor and council members, thank you for indulging me. Today is National Tartan Day, so if you have a tartan on or a kilt on, please come down here and join us. I know Brian McInally, come on down here. All of you come on up here. We've got some great special guests with us. We've got the Celtic Society, Sam's St. Andrews, and we've got Josh McCackern, who's going to play a little tune for us as well. And the mayor said it too, when the bagpipes started, I mean, you get goosebumps. So I hope you all felt that, because that's an important thing for us. And I'm going to, let me read this proclamation to you. "The Declaration of Arbroath, the Scottish Declaration of Independence, was signed on April 6, 1320, and the American Declaration of Independence was modeled on that inspirational document. And National Tartan Day, first officially observed in 1998 by the passage of U.S. Senate Resolution 155, commemorates the signing of the Declaration of Arbroath and recognizes the vibrant and influential role that Americans of Scottish descent have played in the creation and development of our own nation. Scottish-Americans have helped shape every aspect of our society through their many contributions to business, science, medicine, technology, education, sports, and the arts. On the occasion of National Tartan Day celebrated each April 6, we take this opportunity to honor the contributions, accomplishments, and cultural traditions of the members of the Scottish community in Las Vegas, Nevada. We, the mayor and the City Council of Las Vegas, do hereby proclaim April 6, 2016, as National Tartan Day in the City of Las Vegas and ask all residents to join us as well." Big round of applause. Tori Bullock is here to talk to us about that and receive this proclamation. Tori, come on up over here and talk about what's happening next week.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. My name is Tori Bullock, and I'm the president of the volunteer organization that puts on an annual Celtic Festival and Highland Games here in Las Vegas. This will be our 12th year. The event is April 16 and 17 at Floyd Lampark at Tulie Springs. If you have not been to the event or you have not heard of the event, here's your chance to come out and have a great time. We have basically a full-blown Celtic festival. We have pipe and drum bands. Today, you heard one small pipe and drum band. We'll have about 10 or 11 that'll be competing with one another. We have live entertainment on our main stage all week, and it'll be different Celtic bands, some Celtic rock bands, Celtic folk bands. We have a Highland dance competition, which is Scottish dancing on Saturday. We're going to have some Irish dancing on Sunday. We're also going to have Scottish heavy athletics, which is burly people throwing heavy things, including cabers, which are like 100 pounds. Do you? Got some pictures going? Anyway, it's a great time. It's a very family-friendly event. We have a lot of food and Celtic goods vendors. If you're in a mind to buy a kilt or eat some haggis, it's definitely your opportunity next weekend. And we also partner with Safe Nest for their food drive every year in April, so anyone who donates a non-perishable food item gets a dollar off admission to the event. Anything I'm forgetting? Oh, yeah, we also have a huge area for children's activities. So children are welcome, and children under 5 are free, actually. But you can check out our website, which is lasvegascelticsociety.org, and it'll give you the ticket prices, the hours. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. both days. I always tell everyone we have every single thing going on both days except for the Highland dancing. That's only on Saturday. If you come in the afternoon and can stay until mass bands at the end of the day each day, all of the pipe bands that have participated, and the pipers and drummers, come out and they all play together. And that's really something to hear. You'd be amazed.
Great job, thank you. I want to point out that I think Councilman Anthony will be wearing his Greek kilt, as a matter of fact, so. Am I right? I do want to introduce Brian McInally. Brian, come around here. I want everyone to see you. This is important. Brian is wearing the Nevada tartan. So Nevada has its own tartan, and he's wearing that today, displaying that. And he works in our city manager's office, so I appreciate you being here today, Brian. So everybody, come on out. It's a lot of fun. We're going to consume the entire park, and you don't have to be Scottish, English, or Irish to come out. You can...
Is that an Irish?
No, that's the tartan, Nevada State tartan, yeah.
But he's Irish.
Do you remember when that passed legislation?
The Civil Rights Act was there.
Yeah?
Between 1990 and 2000.
No, this is the official one.
Is there an official Irish kilt?
There is an Irish national.
There is an Irish national tartan, yes.
And so next year, you'll come.
Sure.
Councilman Beers can wear that next year.
Tori, did you mention the whiskey tasting all throughout the...
I did not.
Here.
I did not. We do have whiskey tastings, three per day. We have a whiskey distributor from Southern California coming in, and you'll be able to taste some whiskeys that you may not have ever tasted before. We also do have beer concessions, where we have Guinness and Harp and Smidicks and Coors Light, because Wirtz makes us sell Coors Light.
He just lost it.
That's their flagship beer for the brewing company, so come on out. I promise you will have a great time.
Josh, you ready? How about one more tune? Council, mayor, and council? Everybody, is that okay? Can Josh play a tune for us? Josh, would you please? And I'll turn it over to you, Mayor. The younger generation is alive and well, and the Scotch, this will continue forever. He can't be, what is he, 25?
He's 25.
How does that for a good judge?
He's the executive director of the Las Vegas Celtic Society. He's the executive director of the Las Vegas Celtic Society.
Does he give lessons?
You could probably talk him into it.
Not for me, promise.
He's been piping for 12 years. He started when he was 13. I also wanted to mention that it's not too late to volunteer for our event. It's run entirely by volunteers, and if you're interested, you could contact April at volunteer@lasvegascelticsociety.org. Volunteering for a minimum of four hours will get you admission both days, and a t-shirt, and lunch, whatever days you volunteer. And that's a good way to get started with our organization and come and see what it's all about, so.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Josh, thanks. You guys rock. We'll see you out there, Celtic Festival. What a talent. He is really talented. Great. That is simply fabulous. Thank you for doing this. And Councilman Mayor Protem, thank you for year in and year out making this a wonderful event. We're so thrilled about it. And for those who don't know, there's wonderful education in Scotland, and we do have students that go over there to university to study. So while you look at colleges and universities only in our country, there's wonderful education abroad, and certainly in Scotland, absolutely. So our next item, Councilman Coffin's going to recognize our citizen of the month.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor Protem, for bringing such a great show this morning. I've never heard the pipes played so nicely. They did things I didn't know you could do with them, so I suppose that means there's a future for them. I thought, I always thought it was meant to be played ugly, and that was the whole point of it, being on a battlefield and getting people agitated and getting their blood rising. That would just make you lay down and listen to music. Well, we're here to honor a good old friend of ours, all of us and the entire community. Our citizen of the month today is going to be Otto Merida. Otto, come on over here and join me at the podium, please. Come on. Just because you've retired from the chamber doesn't mean you have to take your time. Joining Otto, Otto also is, Otto is good, Peter Guzman, who is the current executive director of the chamber. Otto came to Las Vegas, well, came to the States in 1961. He was 15 years old. He came here to escape the Castro brothers. And I think it's a good thing, because if you had stayed there, you'd have gone to the jungle and died fighting. And so we are proud to have you here, because you are representative of not just the Cuban expat community, but also for Latino affairs in general. I know he's a dyed-in-the-wool Republican, but you know, you go to Otto for anything. He's the go-to person for anything relating to our community, because he futilely votes that way, and then he helps everybody else, because he is that kind of person, because he knows who he's representing. The Latin Chamber of Commerce is not just people of Cuban descent, but it's Mexican and all the other Latin American countries, as well as Spain. And Otto has been a guiding light. He's been the growth force, the single most important factor in the stability of the Latin Chamber of Commerce, which grew from almost no members to now 1,500 members, as Peter Guzman takes over. He's leaving the chamber in good hands. But he's not retiring, really. He's going to be in charge of the Latin Chamber Foundation, which does wonderful things for workers, students, scholarships, all these things that have been done in so many years in the name of the Board of Directors, of which I was a member, and it took a lot of credit for your work, Otto, over the years. Can you imagine?
Actually, that's how you became a city council. I forgot about that.
It's true. I joined the Latin Chamber in 1982, and Otto had already been there for six years, and really, or four years. It was just a wonderful thing by accident, I think, that joined. And I think that Otto has been one of my guiding stars all these years as a stability, a force for stability in this country, and especially, Latin Chamber is a member of the U.S. Hispanic Chamber, so you see, there's a network all around this country. People like Otto everywhere are giving their time and their lives for all of us. Otto, I cannot help it, but I've got to ask you to say a few words, because I know you're capable of it. But don't be too shy and don't be short.
Well, I just want to make sure that you, I retire, on December 11, I retire as the president of the Latin Chamber of Commerce. And before I say a few words, Peter Guzman, which is the new president/CEO, wants to say a few words.
I just want to say that beyond deeply caring about this man, there is no question that we must always recognize the fact that every single Hispanic, whether directly or indirectly, has benefited and continues to benefit from the work and the foundation that this man has laid. This is really serious. This man was, it wasn't always really in to be advocating for the Hispanic causes. This man was doing it for over 40 years. He was doing it at a time where you needed to kick doors in, you weren't really welcome in. And he did that, and all of us, including myself, have benefited from the work that this man has done. And I'm just grateful to Councilman Kaufman for recognizing him today, but we recognize him every day.
Thank you. No, the councilman mentioned, first, I want to thank the City Council for this recognition. I want to really appreciate this. One of the things that, he talks about the successes and so forth. One of my biggest, actually, failure was that we have actually brought in a lot of kids, you know, that we have given scholarships, that have gone to the foundation, that have gone through, that have gone through, you know, UNLBE, have graduated, that are now the next generation and the next leaders of this city and this country and this county. But one of the things, one of my failures is that they're all Democrats. I mean, even when I went to City...
I pretend to be Republican.
I know. But one of, I remember, for example, Edgar Flores, which is one of our latest, our latest city legislators, I mean, actually, we babysat him at the Latin Chamber of Commerce. He was 15 years old when he was working for us, you know, as a receptionist and researcher. So the point that I was trying to make is that he bring me to Calson City, and then he says to me, he, one of the things, I will do anything for you, but I will never do what you're asking me to do, which is to be a Republican. So that's one of the problems that we have had. We have never been able to create a lot of Republicans in terms of these kids that are now growing up and becoming our leaders. Now, I think, once they taste what's going on out there, they will very slowly become Republicans, because that's what they have to do in order to be successful in this country. So I just wanted to mention that. One of the things that I wanted to mention is that also that the foundation is alive and kicking. We are, we are still giving scholarships. We have, right now, we have 27 scholarships that we're giving now. We have changed our scholarship, and now we're giving them for the whole, no, 44 years. And we are mentoring those kids that we have right now. As a matter of fact, we have one kid that is in MIT. So we are thinking that we are trying to do this very successfully, and I think it's important that we do this. Also, we have a senior center that we invite you, all of you, to come. It's next to the Latin Chamber of Commerce on Stewart and 13th. And this, we have actually, we have the senior center, and then we have, we extended it and did another extension of the center, and we have mentally challenged kids, individuals, adults, and we have 60 of them and 60 of the seniors, and they come there every day for five days a week. And that's a commitment that we made years ago in order to be able to be more relevant and to say, we are not only here trying to create, you know, businesses and get loans and so forth and be successful, but I think we have a commitment to the community to help them, and that's what we did. So we continue to do this, and also, I want to invite you to come to the mall on the 16th of April. We have a program going on there from 11 to 3 o'clock. We're going to have youth, we are selling tables as we speak, and it will be something that will help our youth and young adults to try to get jobs, part-time jobs, and perhaps permanent jobs. So hopefully, you could come on at the Boulevard Mall on Twain and Maryland Parkway. Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank all of you for recognizing me today. Thank you.
Otto, just one last word from me, and then I'm going to present you this little proclamation. It is important, it is mandatory, it is obligatory for everyone in this community who wants to understand the Latino community, that you have to visit Otto Merida and make sure that you listen, because he'll talk to you, but he'll listen to you, and then he'll give you advice. If you don't like the advice, that's your problem. But he knows this community, and we joke and joke about our party politics. He's part of the sane group. I think most people in the building are in the sane group in politics, and then beyond that, there's no help for anybody else. So I really appreciate you coming today and being our honored guest. And here is our plaque for you, and there's more. Well, get your finger under it. Okay, Otto, on behalf of the City Council, you are our citizen of the month. And there's more, because every day for the next month, you may drive by, Otto, and see your name posted right outside City Hall on a sign right there on Main Street, across from our garage.
We cannot make it permanent, right?
If you get it 12 times, it's permanent. Mayor, let's go ahead, take a picture.
Yes, let's do that. And Otto, did you forget about our governor? Brian Sandoval, is he a Democrat?
No.
Ah, 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 ah. You know, you can count on me.
No, no, no. I'll stand right next to the sign.
I am a nonpartisan, so I can say anything.
That's what you said. Are you? Okay. And up the hill there. That will be on the corner of First and, right in front, on Main and, what's the cross street?
Clark.
Clark. Right there, you can't, back and forth on Main. We just love you. Thank you. Oh, my. Well, it's all right. I mean, doesn't our governor say he has a Latino background? Yes.
That's for sure.
That is for sure. He doesn't speak Spanish, I know, but in fact, he does. His background...
All right, he's what a wonderful man. He's done so much for our community. We just love him. And now for our next item, Councilwoman Tarkanian's gonna recognize a business that is really very special.
Today, we're honoring an absolutely magnificent community partner for the city of Las Vegas, in fact, for the entire Las Vegas Valley. There is much need in our communities that it's a really warming experience to work firsthand with a company, and especially its leadership, that truly want to make a difference. I'd like to ask Sean McGrady and Brandon Dente to come up, please, and anybody else you have in your group that you want to come up? You come up. We could get some props if you want to there and back. Our props are up there. I put them up there, but...
The milk props.
The milk props, yes. Yeah. We're gonna get the props, because we are honoring Winder Farms, and I want to tell you that any place I go, whoever he's telling to come up, please come up. Just, I just stand on this side, just to show you the number of people Winder Farms has. There we go. There we go. Yes. That was great. That's good, okay. But you know, every place I go, I go to a lot of events that help children, education, the disadvantaged, events that I've gone to for many, many years, and every time I'm going, I keep seeing this milk and orange juice and bakery goods and vegetables, all kinds of things like that. And Winder Farms and Sean McGrady and all the people that work with him consistently have been there to provide support for really hundreds. And I'm not using that lightly, that figure, hundreds of events in Ward 1 and others, other wards within our city. Every, I've gone to other places and other wards, and I've seen that Winder Farms... Are you smiling because you've tasted their milk? Yes, okay, okay. And, absolutely. I think you can see by photos on the screen that they not only... I hope they're there. Yep, they're coming, okay. By these photos on the screen, they not only donate foods, milk, juice, vegetables, and other dairy products, but also their time assisting at the various events. I attended an event for senior citizens recently, and there we had the Winder Farm people, and they were there for the entire time, and they were there giving out the milk and the vegetables, and I believe we had a lottery prize, which you usually have, of a big basket of fruits and vegetables. Even their mascot, Mookie, participates. You might see him in one of the pictures. As a councilwoman for more than 10 years now, I've become more and more aware of the true value of community partners. And so today, it's with great appreciation that I have the opportunity to publicly thank Winder Farms for myself, for all the other council individuals who have used their products too, and to thank Winder Farms, the parent company, Sean McGrady, the regional sales director of Winder Farms in Las Vegas, and Brandon Dente, his community liaison, who I think is taking pictures over there now. She's always very busy in all these things. When I said hundreds of activities, hundreds of times I see them, I just wanna mention a few groups they help. They help the CCSD district with Shop With A Cop, Breakfast With Sana at various schools, family nights, Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation, and all their special needs programs. They worked with our Care Coalition and gave in-kind donations and fundraising and helped with providing lunch. They help Goody Two Shoes. They help a group called Dominate Your Game with recovery drinks donated and also in-kind donation. They help the Girl Scouts, the CCSD Community Partnership Offices, the Teacher Health Trust, Look Out Kids About, First Friday, Career on Wheels, and they help Helder Auto Days. And also Judge William Kepphart, who works with the veterans. He, they have helped all of his veteran groups. So they help Horses for Heroes, Job for American Graduates, Nevada PTA, Opportunity Village, the Springs Preserve, where they have a Green Chef Farmer's Market to promote sustainable farming and healthy foods and environmental awareness. They do all of these things, besides helping dozens of schools within the district. It's sort of boring when you're just going over listing places, but I will tell you, there's nothing boring at all with what they do. And what happened was, because all of those things tasted so good, because I had to taste it when I was at these affairs, I ended up ordering Winder Farms. So they deliver, and my grandchildren love this medal-winning chocolate. So that's great for them. And I love, of course, the milk. I grew up on a farm, and we got the milk right straight from the dairy, which was just a block away practically. And so I, I'm a connoisseur of milk, and I just, I love it. And just, I just can't imagine how they can give away all the things they give away and still stay in business. So I want you to be a little bit careful. And I'm going to turn this over now to you and ask you to say a few words.
Well, first of all, on behalf of Winder Farms, Lois, it's, it's been a pleasure. You know, we, we've been operating in the valley since 2006. And when I moved my life and family down here from Utah, we had no customers. We had no infrastructure. And Las Vegas City was one of the first doors we knocked on, and I can tell you that they, they made it easy, you know, walking us through the process to get into business here. You know, one of the greatest cities in the world to do business in, and at a time when the economy was really tough. I mean, it was 2006, and we had no idea. We, we brought this Utah model to the desert and said, well, let's, let's give it a try. And anyway, so we, we service over, you know, thousands of families every week here in the Las Vegas Valley. And it's, it's, it's an absolute honor. You know, a lot of these, you know, this, these companies and people before us today, some pretty tough acts to follow, all of which we're involved with. We do the Celtic Days events and have for a few years now. Deli Days and met Mr. Murita at that event. I've met the governor of the state in Nevada.
Did he speak Spanish?
He, well, he asked to get Winder Farms in Carson. So he said, hey, look me up when you, you know, it's the big white house there and the big property, so. But certainly can't do all of that without the great people that you see up here with me today. Brandon, the liaison that puts all this together, Robin. Robin's here somewhere, Robin. You're amazing. And of course, you know, Lois, thank you so much for everything. You know, Bob Callaway, our vice president of operations, he makes sure that we keep making money so we can keep giving away all this stuff for free. So without Bob, you know, this wouldn't work. And Kyle Perryman, our sales manager here in Las Vegas, and our, our sales team.
Why don't you just introduce your sales team? Because they work hard.
So, yeah, so Kyle, go ahead.
All right, we have Paul Conceo right here.
Are we getting special names?
No. We won't. Well, I have nicknames, so. DJ Polycie, Paul Conceo. We have Aaron Hendricks here, who's Tommy Lee. We have Mason Taylor, who's the natural. We have Dylan, who goes by DP, played his baseball, double play. All right, we have Alyssa, she's our Winder Wahini. All right. We, we have Brandon Mulvaney, and we call him the reason, because he is the reason that we are successful. And we have Bob Wells, and Bob's nickname is Shy Town. So these guys do a great job, and I'm very proud of them every day.
And, and the other half of our group are home sleeping, because they deliver at nighttime. So, you know, they couldn't be with us today, but, you know, when you go through that list, it, it certainly, it's hard to believe that we, we've done all that, and, you know, we wish we could do more. And so there's definitely more opportunity out there in the city. If you're really looking for it and you're really committed to helping the community, it's, it doesn't take much for the, the people to open their arms and allow you in, so. And then you gotta do what you say you're gonna do. You gotta be there. You gotta show up, so.
You do, you do.
Anyway, thank you.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome, yeah. Well, I want to give you this certificate. First, I wanted to say, you know, if you, if you've never worked with youngsters who haven't had a really good glass of milk or chocolate milk, haven't had it, and we did that Shop With A Cop, and you know, we had the tables laid out, and they absolutely, I, I didn't know how they held all that milk. I mean, they adored it. And they had, if you, if you've never done that before, you maybe can't realize how much this means to the people that you help serve. So thank you so much from all of us on the council. And here's your significant certificate of recognition, presented to Winder Farms, Ward 1, the city of Las Vegas, recognizing, thank you for your outstanding community service. And we also have one for Brandon. She's there all the time, all the time, running around, making the phone calls, finding something that might be missing. And you're gonna take a picture? Okay.
With all of you, I hope?
Yeah. Sean? Come on. See if, yeah. Thank you. So thank you very much for being an outstanding community partner. You have them, but good luck. You're very welcome. Thank you. Those are councilwoman's props. Oh, my gosh, yes, I'm gonna take them. No, you can't. Nobody can touch them.
Although you could auction them.
I can hardly.
Are there rocks in there, too?
No, I don't think so.
Those are real glass bottles. That's what's amazing. I mean, we don't see that often anymore.
No, you know what? They have a box that if you, if it's delivered to your home, and it's got the ice in it, and so if you're not there, it's taken care of. And they're heavy. It's solid.
Okay, anybody gonna volunteer for councilwoman? Okay, Councilman Beers, you're next up.
I was five foot two until I found Winder Farms.
That was a good one, Bob.
How many of you have been in the valley for more than 10 years? You're all natives. And you know how hard it is to build community in this community. It's one of the biggest challenges that all longtime residents who get involved in the community face, is getting everybody involved. We've just seen a company that came to that kind of naturally out of their personality. But you can do it in your 10th year, too. And one of the longtime stalwart companies within our valley, two years ago, set out on a concerted effort internally to get its 1,400 employees here in Clark County geared up to volunteer. And here we are, two years later. In 2015, employees of this company volunteered almost 25,000 hours in this valley. The company of which I speak is Cox Communications. Can I have you all stand up and gather around? We'd like to recognize Cox, yeah, half on this side, half on this side, and this small represent, representative group of their employees. We would like to proclaim this day Cox Volunteers' Day in the city of Las Vegas, and ask you all to join us in celebrating the civic commitment of all these people. Thank you very much. Here is your proclamation, and we'd love to hear more about how you did this. This is really a phenomenal effort.
Well, thank, thank you very much, first off, on behalf of the 1,400 Cox employees, because this really is a recognition to them, not to Cox Communications. In fact, as we think about this particular program, two years ago, we started out, it actually started when I was up in Carson City, and I had the opportunity to see a company recognize their employees for volunteer work. And it really caused me to say, you know what? Our employees give a lot back into this community. We ask them every year to open their wallets up through Cox Charities to be able to give back hundreds of thousands of dollars into the community. And it really came to me that not only is dollars important, but volunteer hours are important. And so we started this program, and we targeted it to allow employees to choose their agencies, their organizations, what was meaningful to them, to give back into the community. And we asked them to log. And we've helped them, really, by giving time and allowing them to really give back to their, to their passion. And so as we think about what's happened here, we have individuals that volunteer with their schools, that volunteer in mentoring children, that volunteer to organizations like Opportunity Village, that give back into the community. And we recognize them. We give them the opportunity to feel good about the efforts that they put forth. And so to me, this is about our employees and their opportunity to give back. And we're just so proud, I, I can't tell you how proud I am of each and every one of our employees. Over 500 of our employees individually gave back and logged their hours in. And that doesn't mean that the other employees didn't give. We're still encouraging them to log in. But I can tell you, every day, I have an employee come up to me and tell me how proud they are to be able to give of their time back into this community, because without that, we're not the great community that we are. So on behalf of the Cox employees, thank you very much, councilman, and thank you, the mayor, and we really appreciate all that you've done.
Mike, remember who you were.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Mike Bolinini, and I'm vice president for Cox Communications. See, it's about the employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. The mayor's got good luck marriage chips for you all. Don't get off stage without one. Oh, we got a picture? Oh, photographer. Oh, photo bombed.
Good luck, good health. Good luck, good health. Thank you for all the...
Okay, everybody, everybody, everybody gather around and look up there. Mike, what would it cost us to get the Dodgers?
Mayor? Okay.
It's about others, Kyle.
Come here, honey. He's soon.
Dodgers, Dodgers, Dodgers.
Did you get everybody? Where is councilman?
Hope we see you. You didn't get one.
These are good luck, good help. Keep them with you.
How are you? Did you get one?
Yes.
Okay, just make sure. I thought maybe it was...
Tell Oscar and Lero and my team a plus or...
He would like it full. What a great group.
You know, that's why our community is so fabulous. You know, I think it's about, we are a diverse community. We're as diverse as Los Angeles and New York City, probably really like New York City. And what's beautiful is that we're not polarized. We're proud of who we are, we're proud of our cultures and heritage and history, but we pull together for Las Vegas. And to me, that group from Cox Communication really says it all, and I know everybody here in this community and this wonderful place in which we live and call home. It is about our giving to others. And we are one unit. We are one family, one unit, but created by all of this diversity. It's, I'm so proud of it. It's awesome. And with that, enough for me, we go on to Councilman Anthony, lucky guy, with his brand-new tie. I appreciate it.
My, my wife picked it out, so that's why it looks nice. Thank you, mayor. Good morning, everyone. Every year in April, the Office of Victims of Crimes helps lead communities throughout the country in their annual observance of the National Crime Victims Rights Week, which will be observed April 10th through April 16th, 2016, all over the United States. At this point, I'd like to invite Catherine Carr, who is the Outreach Director for Marcy's Law Nevada. Would you please come down here? She's a great advocate for our crime victims, so give her a nice round of applause, huh? This year's theme is serving victims, building trust, restoring hope. And it underscores the importance of early intervention and victim services in establishing trust with victims, which in turn begins to restore their hope for healing and recovery. Nevada has been a leader among the states in the effort to include victims of crime as active participants in the criminal justice system, and the Nevada Constitution provides that legislature shall make provisions of law for the benefit of victims of crime. Nevada law includes more than 50 separate provisions recognizing the rights of victims of crime to access information about the operation of the criminal justice system, including a right to information about custodial status of the offender, a right to protective... a right to information about custodial status of the offender, a right to protective and summary judgment orders, a right to restitution, the right to speak at a sentencing hearing, and the right to notification of the release of the offender. Marcy's Law Nevada is a state advocacy group for Senate Joint Resolution 17, which helps create a statewide protocol in Nevada to help victims traverse a complex criminal justice system, keep them well-informed, and ensure that they have a voice in the criminal justice system. Catherine, would you like to make a couple of comments?
Sure. Thank you so much. We're so honored by this recognition and so grateful for all the tireless work that folks give crime victims, both in Las Vegas and statewide. At Marcy's Law, we believe that all victims deserve equal rights and a guaranteed voice through the judicial process. So, we invite you next week to wear the color purple, a color of strength and hope. Additionally, the Las Vegas sign, the high roller, and the City Hall building will be illuminated in purple. And I have also brought you Marcy's Law lapel pins, and every time that you wear it, you are making a stand for equal rights for victims of crimes. Thank you so much.
Tell us a little bit about who was named, why it was named Marcy's Law.
Sure. So, Marcellie Marcy Nichols was murdered too early, she was taken away from us too soon, by an ex-boyfriend. And so, Marcy's Law is spoken in her name, her family was never notified that her killer had been released, and they were confronted by him just a week after her death. So, Marcy's Law is here to help, and thank you so much for all of your efforts, thank you.
Great, good job. Marcy, hold on, hold on, Catherine, hold on. Thank you very much for advocating for our victims, and because of that, the City Council and the mayor are behind you 100%, and we have a proclamation proclaiming April 10th through the 16th, 2016, national crime victims' rights in the City of Las Vegas. So, let's all support her, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Let's get a quick picture taken.
Well, that concludes our morning ceremonial, and so I have, it looks like seven minutes at 10:00, but I also can't see without my eyeglasses, so we're going to give us seven minutes, and we will start promptly at 10:00. Thank you very much. Blanket issues I'm covering, but first and foremost, I am a patient. In reference to the bill item, or bill, agenda item 55, the amended 2016-18, the one concern I have with the amendments are on section 8, 14 through 16, the production and cultivation facilities are being calculated at different rates, and I'm not quite sure I understand why. I'm just going to read off the letter I put together and sent in, obviously you did not receive it, I'll leave copies for you for my suggestions. Thank you for all the work you've done for medical marijuana patients and establishments of Nevada. Section 1B, also 695.100, licensing fees for the MMEs outside the city borders are unclear, and even with the amendments are still kind of unclear. If we could find clarity on that, that would be great. The words adequate supply within the city, who defines this, and how are we going to figure that out? I question whether people outside, cultivators outside the city. What I'm going to ask is if, in fact, I will not be conducting that particular agenda, item 55, Mayor Pro Tem Ross will be doing it, so at that time, if you will have copies delivered ahead of time of that to the members of the council, I'd appreciate it, and he may then invite you back to ask your questions. All right. I did send this in last week, and I'm not sure, is there a different site I should send it to? You might give it to our city clerk here, and she probably could advise you. The city clerk? I mailed it to yourself and Mr. Coffins. Thank you. Okay, I'll leave that with you, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward and state your name for the record? Okay, we will move on to Agenda Nine, business items for possible action. Any items that the council staff or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff has requested consent to Agenda Item Number 24, authorization to condemn for the purchase of the right-of-way and utility easement of the Main Commerce One Way Couple Project on Oki Boulevard between Main Street and Commerce Street to be obeyed to the April 20th meeting. Staff has also requested consent to Agenda Item Number 29, Medical Marijuana Dispensary License Applicant NutriX2 LLC doing business as NutriX at 1-860 Western Avenue be obeyed till the May 4th meeting, Your Honor. And Discussion Item 43, staff has requested that be obeyed till the April 4th, I'm sorry, May 4th meeting as well. Report regarding the status of reimbursement structure for future elections proposed by Clark County, and discussion of possible action regarding available options for upcoming election cycles regarding all wards. Staff has also requested that Agenda Item 49 be obeyed till July 15th. Medical Marijuana Dispensary License Applicant Clark NMSD LLC DBA Nuveda at 1-324 South Third Street be obeyed to that date. And Discussion Item 88, the applicant has requested that be obeyed to June 4th meeting, that is SDR 62647, applicant Carolyn Tobin, owner Cardinal Lindell North LLC on 4.01 acres located at 5550 West Sahara Avenue, that's my motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, and Mr. McAlholland, please, will we have a comment there, too?
I think there's a, I think you read into the record that the item number 49 is going to be obeyed to the second meeting in July, I believe it's the second meeting in June.
Second meeting in June.
June, I'm sorry, my bad. It is June 15.
I thought that's June 15.
And 88, no? May 4th. That's the motion.
Okay, thank you for that correction. So amended, so that's the motion, please.
Oh, I'm not.
Nope? Yes?
Yes, that's it.
That's his motion, thank you very much, please vote, and please post, thank you. Motion carries. And on to Agenda Item 10, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the May 2nd, 2016 regular City Council meeting, may I have a motion, please, to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes, Mayor.
Thank you, this motion to approve those minutes, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Items 11 through 42, with the exception of, what did we just read, 29? You just get them back out. We're at 11 through 42 with the exceptions of...
24 and 29.
24 and 29 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. We have a correction to make for the record regarding item 30, in that the DBA name is changing from Commerce Park Medical to Thrive Cannabis Marketplace. Are there any other items council wishes to bring forward?
Excuse me?
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve this red.
Motion, Your Honor, to approve the consent agenda except for items 24 to 29.
Thank you, this motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries. And we will now move on to Agenda Item.
In one month, the website reached four thousand page views and also a hundred and fifty-plus international sessions. So we'd certainly like to thank the city for its support. The campaign posters that we have here have been distributed throughout the town and LBCVA is going to be providing rack cards at all their visitor centers. So they're just great. So we're pretty excited about this. Next slide?
So exciting.
It is.
Did you rehearse?
Yeah. Great. The next phase of the campaign is the feature film that were aired as Viva Vision Light Show at Fremont Street from April sixteenth to April twenty-fourth, which is National Park Week. And the film stars are Mayor Goodman, an Elvis impersonator, and a showgirl. So I'd like to show you a sneak peek. Doesn't have any sound. We're still working on audio, but I think you're going to love it.
This looks so much better than what I thought it was going to be. Wow.
Great job. Great job.
You hire great people and thank heavens I didn't have to say anything. I would have ruined it.
So I think once, once the sound goes and all the lighting, I think it's going to be fantastic. So the full show will air nightly on the hour eight P.M. to midnight and we're working to invite all partners to join us on Fremont Street on April seventeenth at seven P.M. so for the debut. So hopefully we'll get to see some of you out there. We're really looking for a large crowd. So, next slide? So during National Park Week, the Pacific West Regional Director, which is my boss, who just started her new job about a month ago, has decided to kick off National Park Week from the Las Vegas Valley. And so she'll be starting the day at a cleanup at Tulley Springs and then she'll come to Lake Mead where we'll be having our National Junior Ranger Day. And then she'll end up at Southern Nevada, Fremont Street, to watch the film. So that's pretty exciting for us that she chose that. And during National Park?
Excuse me, what time will that kick off in the morning at Tulley Springs?
At nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
Nine, oh, we can sleep in?
Yep. We're making you show up at eight?
The rest of us nine, we can sleep in. Oh, I love that.
Eight forty-five would probably be best so that we can do, good safety briefing before we get started.
Beautiful. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine. We, the National Park Week, there'll be free entrance for all parks, including Lake Mead. And we've got several programs that are going to go on that week and actually through the rest of the month. We've highlighted Junior Ranger Day, which will be April sixteenth. We've got April twenty-third, which is Find Your Park Day, which will have a series of programs, how to cook on a campfire, participating in a dog walk, learn how to take scenic pictures on Instagram, and also discover nature journalism. And on April thirtieth, we're partnering with the Clark County School District for their Science and Technology Festival. And we're going to have interactive activities for all kids and adults, bird watching, plant identification, because we all know that scientists are not the only ones that wear lab coats. People who wear, who are rangers and wear flat hats are also scientists. So we're encouraging everybody to come out and we're really glad with that partnership. And the next slide. And then in the fall, we're excited to partner with Outside Las Vegas Foundation and the City of Las Vegas on our Get Outdoors Nevada Day on October fifteenth at Lorenzi Park. So we're excited about that. And there'll be, this will be a major centennial event and we're looking for thousands of folks to come out and discover our great public lands. So with that, again, I'd like to thank you all for your support of the National Park Service, especially at Lake Mead and Tulley Springs. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Burpee.
So I've been here now about six months. I'm definitely not a long-term person yet, but I've been so incredibly thankful to Lake Mead, being a new park, the only employee. I'm very thankful the support that the staff out there has given. But I'm also incredibly grateful for the, just the welcome that the city, many of your staff members have been amazing to work with already and I thank you very much for that. It's a very exciting time as we stand up our newest national park right here. So as part of that process, our planning is very public-driven and we're kicking off many of those activities. As we start in with our general management plan, it'll be a chance for the public to really design their park. The way I'm looking at this park in many ways, we're not designing a national park just for the people, but we're designing a national park of the community and the community will be involved. The legislation was very clear, provides for this Advisory Council and representing the City of Las Vegas is Mayor Pro Tem Ross. And I think it's a very good decision because after all, he carries mammoth teeth around with him, so I think he'll be perfect for our planning this Ice Age Park.
Can I pause you right there? Just tell everyone what this is?
Sure.
Mayor, with your permission?
Please.
This is a cast of a woolly, Colombian woolly mammoth tooth found at Gilcrees near Tulley Springs. And it sits in my office and was a gift to me from the Protectors of Tulley Springs for supporting the endeavor of helping create the national park, the national monument. So we, I think, Councilman Coffin, you requested we have props. My staff heard you loud and clear. Here is our prop. Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, that's awesome. I'm very jealous.
And if that's one tooth, I want you to imagine the size of Colombian mammoth. And that's a sense of wonder about what's discovered out there and what will be part of our future. And in fact, the Advisory Council will be key on helping ensure this kind of public comment and input into the park. We're anticipating our first meeting in June and we'll be doing some orientation work with the council throughout May. So it's very exciting. As part of that idea that it's publicly driven, this park is going to be very partner-focused. The partners that I want to highlight today are the Protectors of Tulley Springs, who do more than just hand out casts of mammoth teeth. We've entered into a formal agreement for interpretation and education. In fact, we just got done doing four hikes out at Tulley Springs in March and April. That really is exciting, very well attended. POTS has also provided some funding for interpretive materials. We'll be putting up our first kiosks on the park here in the next few months. Go ahead, next. As a good kind of display of what the Protectors of Tulley Springs really means, they have led off a, an effort to roll out, and I think this is very exciting, education plans for every grade from kindergarten to high school that will be kicking off here in a couple weeks. In fact, not only is that, but it's a chance to introduce the park to all three hundred and thirty thousand children in the Clark County School District. And as an exciting way of doing that, we had a Girl Scout group. It's amazing what scouts can do. We had a Girl Scout group who came up with this great idea of producing a video that will be shown in April to every school kid in this county. And they came up with a script, worked with PBS to storyboard it, and PBS, the local PBS station, came on board and filmed it. And I think we're going to see a small portion of that ten-minute film right now. Congress created Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument to preserve the fossils that are there because those fossils tell us a lot about what it was like here a long, long time ago.
There were springs, natural springs like this one, all throughout the Las Vegas Valley. There were American lions, Colombian mammoths, and saber-toothed cats.
I think the most bizarre animal that lived here in Southern Nevada during the Ice Age is this one here, which is a Shasta ground sloth. These were extremely odd animals that walked on the outer edges of their feet. They had big, long claws and they could, they could use their claws to protect themselves. When we find fossils in the field, they're never complete and whole like you see in the exhibits in the museum. This particular one was a bison and you can actually see the backbone pieces of the bison and part of the horn core. Yes?
How old is this fossil?
This one is about twenty thousand years old, which is way back into the Ice Age.
One of the interesting things about Tulley Springs is that it records the last ten thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand years of time, all the cool animals that lived there, just the last two Ice Ages. Researchers come from around the world to study our rocks. They're that important.
If this land is so important, why is there all this trash?
As Las Vegas grew so quickly, a lot of people used it to dump trash. It doesn't look like a national park to many people's eyes and that's the work we have to do.
In order to clean up this place, it's going to be a monumental effort. Can you guys help?
I think we can help.
There is a national monument right here in our backyard.
But some people have abused and trashed it.
Tell your friends and family about Tulley Springs Fossil Bed National Monument and help us save our treasures.
Tulley Springs Fossil Bed National Monument.
We are quickly making people and the Park Service and other places really jealous that this park's so new and we're already reaching all three hundred and thirty thousand school kids in the fifth-largest school district in the country. I think that's extraordinary and it's because of folks like POTS making that happen. So if all this is happening when I still have the moniker of the Lone Ranger of Tulley Springs, just imagine what's going to happen when I can no longer call myself the Lone Ranger of Tulley Springs. And so by the end of this week, I will have selected our first two real working employees, rangers who will help set up our volunteer program and start doing educational programs. We also are, got great support from our regional office, they're going to help us bring on some seasonal law enforcement support this summer as well. But it's, it's not just about park rangers and flat hats, but the way we can engage the community. I had somebody get ahold of me and say they're doing their sabbatical and they want to come and help and volunteer at Tulley Springs. So I've got this lady who's coming for six weeks. She's going to photograph the ten thousand specimens that we've already brought back from California so that they can be put online and have Friday Fossil Fun Fact Facebook posts, which I'm really excited about. So this, this process of setting up will end up doing many, many things. I thank Mayor Pro Tem Ross for helping make some resources available from the public works folks and they're going to be out helping us clean up that section along at the end of Jones. We also have a, April thirtieth, we have a student cleanup as part of that mammoth penny push, that penny drive within the schools. And during the summer, once those two folks come on, we'll start having daily programs at the park as well as in the fall, starting having regular hikes and getting people out there and exposed to this amazing paleo past.
Mayor, can I pause it one more time?
Please.
Superintendent Burpee, would you talk about the pennies in the classrooms for me, please? I was visiting someone, someone's home last night in Sun City, Aliante, and they were, they were, they're members of POTS and this, the group of people from the neighborhood. And they were so excited about this. Can you talk about that just for a minute because I was really very impressed with what they told me?
Yeah, as part of rolling out those teacher resources, those lesson plans, really we're looking at ways to engage, you know, the students and invest in their park, whether it's emotionally through that video and things like that, or literally having an opportunity to bring pennies, to bring coins, to donate to the Protectors of Tulley Springs. I say that, you know, it's an earlier generation that put all that trash out there. And I think it's pretty amazing that it's this generation of students that's really going to clean the place up. So every classroom has a milk jug from a different dairy than the other, but a milk jug that throughout April, they'll have a chance to come in and bring in and invest in their park.
But I want you to mention that dairy. That's what I'm getting at. Who donated the, the milk jug?
We just saw the name.
Gold Meadow.
Gold Meadow, thank you. I had Winter Farms in my head.
I know, we all do.
And those types of community, community partners, I think are amazing for our, our chance to do great things. What POTS has done there will help the park for years to come. It's part of the idea with the Advisory Council that we also want to have a kids' council so that they can help have their voice in their national park.
Wonderful.
Exciting times.
So we thank you all and we welcome you. You'll love it here.
Thank you.
We know you well, right? Thank you for all that you're doing already. We're so excited about this. Wonderful. And Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that there are people that haven't been thanked today, and I'm not sure I could remember all of the names of the organizations, who for years have pinpointed this as being something. If it wasn't going to be a state park, which we could not afford, then maybe a federal reservation, a federal park. And that's what we have now. I think of Arquio Nevada as an organization that's pioneered in this. Oh my God, I can't even remember the name of the professor at UNLV whose nickname was Bones. She was a Ph.D. who loved this in the fifties and sixties. You see, so there are people who worked really hard to try to get something done here. The late Harry Mortensen, who I served with in the legislature, you all know Harry and of course, his wife Helen, his widow Helen, who has promised me a personal tour of what's going on out there. We couldn't have gotten through the last seven or eight legislative sessions in Carson City without a resolution asking for this. And really, that's so, that's a lot of the start, was getting the state behind it because we just couldn't afford it. So I don't know how many urban national parks there are, but I would have to say this would qualify as an urban national park. And so it's really unique in that respect and, but I'm worried about the safety of it because the higher the profile, the more people will get curious about it. They hear there are fossils, so scavengers want to come on out and grab what they can before they can't, which means they panic, they grab and they grab and they destroy in the process. So I really hope that the Protectors and the agency can pay special attention to that to try to set up remote means of monitoring or some means beyond the manpower because it's so long.
Yep.
What is it, twelve, fifteen miles long?
Twenty-five miles.
Twenty-five miles altogether and maybe only a mile wide or two miles wide in some circumstances. So there's dozens of entry points just walking in.
Absolutely.
And yet we're here, we got it done and so thank you very much and proud to have met you today, John, as a first staff member and I'm looking forward to coming out there and seeing it. I've been playing golf every now and then right near it. And it just never, you know, I think the people that live nearby didn't realize how great this is. But now hopefully, those residents will all become Protectors. If you, you know, really spend time with those neighbors like in Silverstone and the other housing developments that butt up against it, they can help look out for what's in their backyard. So I hope you enlist them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you on the sixteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
This was a report only, so no motions required. And unfortunately, I'm embarrassed to have to bring back Agenda Items eleven through forty-two because I failed to disclose and abstain from Agenda Items twenty-nine through thirty-six because I have a son who's involved with medical marijuana. So can I have a motion, please? Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mayor.
To hold back eleven through whatever.
But I want you to mention that dairy. That's what I'm getting at. Who donated the milk jug?
We just saw the name.
Gold Meadow.
Gold Meadow, thank you. I had Winter Farms in my head.
I know, we all do. Thank you, Mayor.
And those types of community partners, I think, are amazing for our chance to do great things. What POTS has done there will help the park for years to come. It's part of the idea with the Advisory Council that we also wanna have a Kids Council so that they can help have their voice in their national park.
Wonderful.
Exciting times.
Well, we thank you all, and we welcome you. You'll love it here.
Thank you.
We know you well, right? Thank you for all that you're doing already. We're so excited about this. Wonderful, and Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that there are people that haven't been thanked today, and I'm not sure I could remember all of the names of the organizations, who for years have pinpointed this as being something. If it wasn't gonna be a state park, which we could not afford, then maybe a federal reservation, a federal park, and that's what we have now. I think of Arquio Nevada as an organization that's pioneered in this. Oh my God, I can't even remember the name of the professor at UNLV whose nickname was Bones. She was a PhD who loved this in the 50s and 60s, you see? So there are people who worked really hard to try to get something done here. The late Harry Mortenson, who I served with in the legislature, you all know Harry, and of course, his wife Helen, his widow Helen, who has promised me a personal tour of what's going on out there. We couldn't have gotten through the last seven or eight legislative sessions in Carson City without a resolution asking for this. And really, that's a lot of the start, was getting the state behind it, because we just couldn't afford it. So I don't know how many urban national parks there are, but I would have to say this would qualify as an urban national park, and so it's really unique in that respect. But I'm worried about the safety of it, because the higher the profile, the more people will get curious about it. They hear there are fossils, so scavengers wanna come on out and grab what they can before they can't, which means they panic, they grab, and they grab, and they destroy in the process. So I really hope that the protectors and the agency can pay special attention to that to try to set up remote means of monitoring or some means beyond the manpower, because it's so long.
Yep.
What is it, 12, 15 miles long?
25 miles.
25 miles altogether, and maybe only a mile wide or two miles wide in some circumstances. So there's dozens of entry points just walking in. And yet, we're here, we got it done, and so thank you very much, and proud to have met you today, John, as a first staff member, and I'm looking forward to coming out there and seeing it. I've been playing golf every now and then right near it, and it just never, you know, I think the people that live nearby didn't realize how great this is. But now, hopefully, those residents will all become protectors. If you, you know, really spend time with those neighbors like in Silverstone and the other housing developments that butt up against it, they can help look out for what's in their backyard, so I hope you enlist them. Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you on the 16th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
This was a report only, so no motions required, and unfortunately, I'm embarrassed to have to bring back Agenda Items 11 through 42, because I failed to disclose and abstain from Agenda Items 29 through 36, because I have a son who's involved with medical marijuana. So can I have a motion, please, Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mayor.
To pull back 11 through whatever, 42.
I think, Mayor, with Mr. Gerbick's counsel, we can recall 29 through 36, something consent to Agenda Item. Can we do that?
Oh, just those alone?
And then that would be my motion.
That's much better. Recalling 29 through 36, if you don't mind, please vote on that. Okay, we're voting to recall 29 through 36.
Maybe.
There we go. Please vote, and please post. And there they are. Thank you very much. And now we are gonna move for approval on Agenda, well, 29, as you know, has been obeyed to the 4th of May, but on that and through 36, I will be abstaining, so a motion to approve those items, please, Mayor Protem.
I would move to approve Agenda Items 30 through 36, consent to Agenda Items 30 through 36, Mayor and Council.
And probably even, I should vote on the obeying of 29 too, because I shouldn't be in that, so can we back it up?
29 through 36.
29 through 36, if you'll move for approval of that again. Okay, and please post. Thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you for catching that, Mr. Gerbick. We are now on to 45? Okay, Agenda Item 45, Report by the Department of Human Resources and Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Approval of a New Four-Year Contract Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas Employees Association (LVCEA) and the City of Las Vegas, $23,800,000 general fund. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the Council, Betsy Fretwell, City Manager. It's my great pleasure to present to you a four-year agreement with the Las Vegas City Employees Association. We have been negotiating over the last several months to try and reach a resolution, and I couldn't be prouder of this moment. We have over 2,000 employees that are non-public safety in the City of Las Vegas, and this contract will be the contract that governs our employment relationship with them over the next four years. I'd like to thank Henry and Julie and the rest of the board members from LVCEA. These negotiations are never easy. There are a lot of very committed individuals with a lot of passionate perspectives, and it takes a lot of time to work through some very complex issues in a fairly flat revenue picture for the City of Las Vegas. But they did it, and they did it with us, and I really appreciate it, and I just wanted to say that first. It's my obligation to share with you the financial impact under state law, and so the financial impact, Dan will go through the annual impact, which is approximately between $2 and $3 million per year. The total contract impact over the four years is $23 million. This is in line with what we have negotiated and you have subsequently approved with PPA, Las Vegas PPA, and our LVPoa, our corrections officers. So it's a very similar contract from an economic standpoint. We feel like we've made great progress, and I believe this is a good contract that we've brought to you today. I don't wanna steal Vanetta and Mark's thunder for later today when we talk about the budget, but I do think it's really important for everyone to remember that our non-public safety employment, so this category of employees that we're talking about today, is over 20% below where we were in 2008, still today. And what you will see later on today is that a whole lot of work is being done despite that decrease in employee population for the City of Las Vegas. We have just barely crept back up in the last couple of years, and even today, we have just a small handful of non-public safety individuals that we're recommending for approval in this next year's budget, which is a continuing indication that our ability to restore those services through people has substantially changed. I would say the paradigm has shifted. That does not mean that there's not a lot of work. As Councilman Coffin would remind me, there are a lot of roads yet to be paved, there are a lot of sidewalks yet to be built, there are a lot of community centers that we have to run, there are a lot of parks that we have to mow and irrigate and make ready for all kinds of play, community centers that we run in the afternoon for youth development, and a variety of other things that we do to keep this government running well and efficiently for the citizens that we represent. So I would say that I'm very proud of this, and I hope that we will have your support in ratifying this agreement after Dan goes through all the details, and I'm sure Henry would like to make some comments as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dan, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Fretwell.
Good morning. Dan Tarwheter, Human Resources Director, for the record. Our slides, first slide is really background. Existing contract expires this June, so we're three months early. We're very proud of that, getting this in early, and in my view, probably one of the few ones that we've been this early on in years past. We spent eight negotiating sessions getting this contract agreed upon. The tentative agreements remaining articles were signed back in last month, March 14th, and then our informational meetings conducted by the CEA was March 21st on 16, and it was overwhelmingly agreed to by all of its members, and we're very proud of that, too. I would like to turn the next slides over to Mike Skelzy, who's done a lot of the work on the contract. I'd also like to thank Morgan Davis on our team and the rest of our team, and then afterwards, I'd like Henry Luhon, if you would like to come up and say a few words, we would appreciate it. So, Mike?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Michael Skelzy, a manager, employee in Labor Relations, City of Las Vegas. I'm gonna review the next couple of slides. I'd also like to invite Henry and Julie up to join me, if they would. Okay, this is a four-year agreement, so I'm gonna try to review the most important parts. Obviously, the most important part of any agreement is the wage component, and so I'll break down the four years. In the first year of this agreement, we're gonna apply a 2% COLA increase, and we will still have some people that are Y-rated, which means they're still earning above the range max, and for those folks, we're gonna give them a lump sum bonus equivalent to the 2%, but no one will receive more than 2%. In year two of the agreement, we're gonna apply a 2.5% COLA increase, and we'll use a similar strategy for those folks that are still Y-rated, they would receive a 2.5% lump sum increase, but again, no one will exceed 2.5%. In year three of the agreement, we're gonna apply a 2.5% COLA increase, and in year four of the agreement, we're gonna apply a 3.5% lump sum increase, but only for those that are at the range max or above. Anyone who's still on a step will just continue to get their normal step increase, which is One other big change for us, and obviously, this was legislated under SB 241, was the cost of payment for union hours that are worked. And the way that we're gonna get this reimbursement, what we've agreed to mutually, is that we're gonna devalue the birthday holiday by six hours. So if a person would normally get a 10-hour birthday holiday, they're only gonna get a four-hour birthday holiday, and the other six hours that's collected back will be utilized to offset the cost of the union hours. So we have two full-time people, both working 2,080 hours, and then we have some people that we pull out of the field to help for representation, for grievances, or discipline. And so when we add all those costs up, we came out with the six-hour equivalent. So the six hours equates to approximately $270,000 per year. That would be a cost savings to us over the life of the agreement. The cost savings will be a little bit over $1 million. We also had some minor language cleanup to this agreement, but I've really reviewed the most important parts. Most of the language articles just stayed the same. So we believe it to be a good agreement. We are gonna ask for your approval of this agreement, and I think Henry would like to say a few words.
Good morning. Thank you, Mikey. Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name's Henry Luhon, President of the Las Vegas City Employees Association. First of all, I'd like to thank all our members for overwhelmingly voting on this contract. It's a great proposal, and it's much deserved. The thing that we're looking for is longevity and stability, which they're able to get now for a few years, and I couldn't have done it without my board and my negotiations team. I'd like to thank them personally, Julie Hiddle, Deandre Carruthers, Marty Toledo, Derek Kibler, Shawnee Coleman, Sean Bolster, our negotiations chair, Nikki Gummelo, Stephanie Demelaus, and Raymond Jackson, for all their assistance, and obviously, our Yoda, Jeff Allen, who's not here right now, but all those that are here, please stand, and if you're recognized. Shawnee doesn't understand. There's Marty. But I believe this is a great contract, and we're really excited about it. Thank you so much, and I hope you guys bless it with today.
Thank you, Henry. And Julie, you wanna introduce yourself and say something too, because we owe this to you as well?
Yeah, Julie Hiddle, Vice President of the LVCEA. I would just like to reflect on what Henry had said. I believe that this is a very good deal for our members and for the city, and I certainly hope that you'll give us all your blessings today.
Thank you both. And Ms. Fretwell, do you wanna add any other piece here?
We did build in the cost impacts anticipated for this year into the budget that's being presented this afternoon, so those numbers are already included.
And what is the total membership of the LVCEA?
How many members do you have, Julie?
We have approximately about 850.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Fretwell, thank you for your comments about where we are today, you know, the backbone of this organization, along with our public safety teams, our employees, and so I'm, and you mentioned we're still down 20% from where we used to be, and we're still providing that level of service to our customers and to our residents that they've come to expect. I think we, as councilmembers, recognize that, see that. We often forget that fact, that we're still down 20%. But I want to congratulate Henry and Julie and your team, despite of Senate Bill 241 and the effects that it's having, that we have come to some understanding of trying to live through that and continue to do what you guys do for you, for the employees that you represent, and that's significant to me. I assure you, SEIU is not enjoying the same thing in Clark County. That's not what's happening over there, so...
And this is the earliest ever.
And it is, and Henry, you hit it on the head about stability and longevity, and for our city manager to send up with her team and say, "This is good, we're heading in the right direction for the benefit of tomorrow," is quite significant. So congratulations to both sides, you did a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, and Councilwoman?
I just wanted to express appreciation for the professionalism and the perseverance you had in LVCEA and also our staff, and I'm glad that you were able to work this out so well and so early. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Dan, and Mike, and Morgan, and your entire team too, we know the hours and looking at the number of meetings, and it is amazing that you did come in early. I'd love to see that, because it certainly helps the entire processing of everything we're doing move along more smoothly. So we just really appreciate it, and where's the jam? That's a joke, an inside joke, sorry. So may I have a motion?
Your Honor, it is my privilege to motion to accept and approve this collective bargaining agreement between the City of Las Vegas and the City Employees Association.
Thank you, there's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Proud of you. Motion carries unanimously. We are unanimously so thrilled.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership and your team. Okay, Agenda Item 46, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Termination of Disposition Development Agreement (DDA) between City Parkway 6, Inc., CPV, and Palmer City-Corrie Union Park Hotel LLC developer, whereby the parties mutually agree on the release of development rights on 251 South City Parkway, AKA Parcel G, in Symphony Park, and to the disposition of earnest money, this is in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow. Good morning, again.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, members of City Council, for the record, Bill Arntz, Economic Urban Development. In 2008, City Parkway 5, Inc., and Palmer City Corrie Union Park Hotel LLC entered into an agreement for the sale and development of Parcel G in Symphony Park for construction of a 400-suite, non-gaming hotel. Palmer City Corrie is a joint partnership between City Corrie Development, a San Francisco-based developer, and Charlie Palmer Restaurant Group. This termination agreement results in both parties acknowledging termination of all development rights for Parcel G in Symphony Park, and also results in the handling of a developer earnest money deposit of $484,348 by moving this deposit into a new 18-month escrow. Under the new escrow, the developer will have 18 months to make an investment in real property located in downtown Las Vegas, which is defined as redevelopment area 1 or redevelopment area 2, by either purchasing land, a building, or entering into a long-term lease of 30 years or longer. If the developer fails to make the above investment, then the earnest money deposit will be paid in full to City Parkway 5, Inc. Staff recommends approval. With us today is Richard Feminella, representing the developer, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
And so this is agreed upon on both sides?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any comments, questions from Council? I would entertain a motion, please.
Your Honor, I'd move to approve it, Agenda 46, as presented by staff.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote. Please post. And the motion carries. Thank you very much, and Mr. Feminella, thank you very much on behalf of the company and all involved. Agenda Items 47 and 50, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Purchase and Sale Agreement Between City Parkway 5, Inc., CPV, and Nevada H&amp;C Distilling Company LLC, NVH&amp;C for Business Retention, Expansion, and Job Creation, totaling approximately 3.02 acres of vacant land located along West Mesquite Avenue, which is part of 301 West Mesquite Avenue, and that's APM 139-27-401-035. And Agenda Item 50, 50, which is R-19216, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Finding that the Proposed Sale of Vacant Land to Nevada H&amp;C Distilling Company LLC, NVH&amp;C, totaling 131,607 square feet that is a part of 301 West Mesquite Avenue. Portion of APM 139-27-401-035 is for the purposes of economic development and redevelopment. These are in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow. So Mr. Arntz, again.
Thank you. Bill Arntz, Economic Urban Development. Mayor Protem, you are not the only one with a prop here this morning. With me today is Jonathan Hensley and his team with Nevada H&amp;C Distilling Company. I'm gonna explain this great project and then let Jonathan and his partners explain the business. Nevada H&amp;C Distilling Company is a distillery operation managed by Mr. Hensley and Aaron Chepnek. Mr. Hensley and Mr. Chepnek are probably familiar names to the Council. They founded The Griffin on East Fremont in our Fremont East Entertainment District, and I'm glad to report that it is still a thriving business today. The distillery leases a portion of the building at their current location, 418 West Mesquite, which is off of Mesquite and is east of City Parkway and adjacent to a piece of land that the city owns through City Parkway 5, Inc. The distillery is ramping up operations and needs additional space to construct two buildings, a 10,000-square-foot manufacturing and corporate office building, and an additional 9,000 square feet of storage space. Because of this, the distillery has made a purchase offer to the city to purchase the three-acre parcel owned by City Parkway 5. This business expansion would create 28 new direct jobs with pay ranging from $12 to $25 per hour, and the construction would employ 20 direct jobs. The city's negotiated a sale price at the higher of two appraisal values, $516,000, which is approximately $3.92 per square foot. The net sale price will be adjusted depending on the cost of installing either sewer or septic expenses. The property currently needs additional infrastructure to support the expansion, and so the city will offer a credit against that purchase price up to a ceiling of $330,000. so the city will offer a credit against that purchase price up to a ceiling of $330,000. The distillery is required to pay $150,000 at closing on purchase of the land. The city, through City Parkway Five, Inc., has agreed to seller finance the remainder of the purchase price through a seven-year promissory note, with the balance being paid over the first eighteen months of interest-only payments, and then after that eighteen-month period, over a period of sixty-six months of simple amortization payments, all at an interest rate of 5.5 percent. The distillery has agreed to follow a strict performance schedule. The distillery is also, I mentioned, is in existing space at 418 West Mesquite. They've outgrown that space. Their current landlord, Steve Spann, has worked with them, and they've outgrown that space. Mr. Spann has presented some concerns to the city. We've had considerable dialogue with Mr. Spann, as well as with Mr. Hensley and his team, and we're glad to report that in our agreement, there is a good faith requirement for working with Mr. Spann, who also operates another business in that existing building himself. I'd like to just read that language in our agreement. In the agreement, it states, "If during the period of twelve months after the effective date, the adjacent property owner presents to developer a site plan approved by the City of Las Vegas that requires overflow parking for certain events and a path for emergency egress, if that is the only emergency exit path approved by the City of Las Vegas, the developer will work in good faith with the adjacent property owner to develop a mutually beneficial agreement that provides for a portion of any necessary overflow parking spaces, approximately fifteen to twenty spaces, and emergency egress if required." This is a good faith requirement, so we're leaving it up to private parties that are already in a long-term contractual relationship to resolve this issue, should it be an issue in the future. We're excited about this business. And my final remark, I just wanted to mention that this type of business is really a common economic development strategy, becoming an increasingly common strategy for economic development agencies. Probably the best-known example might be for Collins, Colorado, with their craft brewery operations. And so this really is a part of the puzzle, a piece of the puzzle, if you will, for what we're doing with economic development in downtown. We have the Tanya Creek Brewery that's operating. We'll have a craft distillery that is ramping up, and I'll let Jonathan describe the operation. I would not do it justice. But this really is a piece of the puzzle for downtown. We think it's suitable for the area, given the industrial uses adjacent to it, and I would appreciate your support. We recommend approval. With that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan, and I did mention that he has some show-and-tell props, so I'll let him introduce the props and talk about his business.
Thank you so much, Bill. My name is Jonathan Hensley. Mayor Goodman and city council members, I'm so excited to be here. I currently live in Pasadena, California, but I love Las Vegas so much and I spend so much time out here, I just bought a house down on Trotter Circle.
We love that. Wonderful. Is that one? That's you? Right. Wonderful.
So eleven years ago, Mr. Chepnek and I, as business partners, came before the city council to ask for a special use permit. With great anxiety, I just committed to a twenty-year lease down on property in East Fremont that looked substantially different than it does today. And we've done so well down there. We've sold so much vodka and bourbon, in fact, that we decided to manufacture our own. And these are the real stars here today. I present-
Mayor Protem wanted to know, are those also like the milk being distributed? I'm kidding you.
We'll talk about that.
He doesn't drink anyway, so he couldn't have it.
But I present to the city council and to the public, really, for the first time, this is our Smoke Wagon Bourbon. Smoke Wagon is the Old West term for the single-action Colt revolver. And Silver Dollar Vodka. This, in fact, is a trademark of the Morgan Silver Dollar that's pressed into the glass that we have copyrighted from the United States government.
Wonderful.
And the reason why these two characters here are so, are really the bigger stars than us here, is there's a competition for spirits. Gin, vodka, bourbon, whiskeys, everything, there's a whole number of them in the world. But the absolute most prestigious, and this can be vetted by anybody in the business, is the San Francisco World Spirits Competition. And our distributor, Wirtz, which is now Breakthrough, they just changed their name, their corporate name, wanted to get us in the competition. We did not have a high expectation on that. But it was just announced on Monday at noon that Smoke Wagon Bourbon was awarded the gold medal by the San Francisco-
Oh, my heavens. Congratulations. Awesome.
And Silver Dollar-
Tweet that out. Are we tweeting? Oh, good. You're out. You're out there. Everybody watching.
And our vodka was awarded the silver medal.
Awesome. Well, it should be. You have the silver dollar there. Wonderful.
Well, we're joking internally that they offered us the gold medal, but we turned it down because we-
That sounds good.
I'm kidding, kidding. We're currently down on Mesquite, and we think we now, with this great gust of wind in our sails coming from the San Francisco competition, that we really have a nationally marketable group of products. We think we can be the city bourbon and the city vodka after a very, fairly short time, and we think we're going to then be able to market throughout the Southwest and really across the country. I'm in the entertainment business. I know something about this, so I'm really hoping that we can accomplish this. And thus, we need more space. And with space and with our expansion, we can hire Las Vegans. A great improvement in the tax basis down there on Mesquite will beautify the area and will continue to contribute to the great change that's going on in that part of the city. So having said that, I'll hand it over to my business partner, Aaron Chepnek. He'll tell you more, a little bit more about the process, about how we do this, so that you, great people, know what we're doing down there. Thanks.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Aaron Chepnek with Nevada H&amp;C Distilling. And yeah, as Jonathan mentioned, it was eleven years ago that we first came down here for The Griffin. And due to the amazing experience we had with the city, the people of Las Vegas, Office of Business Development, when it came time to decide where to do our next business venture, doing it in the city was pretty much a no-brainer for us because we love it here. And as Jonathan said, as far as room, we've already run out of room because for our bottles, we were insistent on having everything made in the United States, and before us, you could not get custom glass made here. And because of the design of our bottle, there was a company that was willing to do this for us, but the amount that we have to order for each product is substantial, and we've already run out of room at our location. And we have, because of our distributor's sort of insistence and encouragement, we're already coming out with more brands, which require more bottles. And so even though we've just signed a deal for distribution with Wirtz in Las Vegas, we're already at a point, without even selling anything, where we require more land. And so it's very exciting, you know, things, it's a very exciting process, and it's nice. The rewards were nice. You know, we have a proprietary blend for our bourbon. It's a pretty exciting process. We hand-select barrels from different warehouses. We haven't actually started aging things here yet. And so we spent a lot of time with Jeremy through our distributor blending and creating the formula, and the result was the gold medal. And so just, you know, looking for support and excited to be here.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
Oh, and the vodka, of course. I mean, well, the vodka we actually do make here, I should bring that one up, because that we actually distill at our facility.
And where is the bourbon?
The bourbon is, everything is made in Indiana right now.
But at some point in the future, you might look to bring that here?
Yes, absolutely. But another thing we have to do is build a climate-controlled, humidity-controlled aging facility, because under the current conditions, we wouldn't be able to age bourbon here, it would evaporate too quickly.
Interesting. Interesting. And the third gentleman is?
Jeremy Merritt with Breakthrough Beverage. Just want to talk to the merit of these products here. There isn't a higher achievement than you can receive in the spirits world than receiving gold medal and even a silver medal at the San Francisco Global World Spirits Competition. I'm really excited to have this in my portfolio. I'm flooded with inquiries to get distribution in the state, so I'm extremely happy to have these guys on board.
Wonderful. Well, congratulations. How exciting, and how exciting for you. Councilman, look at that. Look at that. I mean, does that show pride? Oh, and the smile. Wonderful. Besides wanting to try these beverages here, is there, are there any comments? Yes? Oh, my.
No, Your Honor. No, Your Honor. No additional comments than that.
No additional comments? Okay. Councilman?
Well, I want to know when the single malt Scotch is coming. Because I won't support this unless there's a single malt Scotch coming.
Well, to be Scotch, it's got to be made in Scotland. Maybe we could do a single malt for you.
We celebrate Tartar Day today, so I'm sure we can do some kind of Scotch.
You can cut them a little slack, yeah.
Are you just doing vodka and bourbon and that's it?
For now, yes.
Okay.
Give them time. This is great. Okay, Councilman. You want to hear any, does the public, anybody, Councilman Barlow says, anybody, there are no tastings here? Here comes somebody. That's very nice of you. And please make sure you tell us your name.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Stevens Spawn. I'm the owner of the building at 418 West Mesquite. And as many in the council know, I approached the city when it was still in negotiation with the distillery about purchasing part of this land. And understandably, the city honored that contract, and that was unsuccessful in the purchase. However, the city and the distillery have gone above and beyond the call of duty to help secure ingress and egress easements and potentially pave Mesquite the street and potentially approach NDOT about paving parts of the shoulder that abut the highway. And so, and the distillery has also pledged to attempt the best they can to potentially have a joint parking space. And so all of this has given me hope and optimism that not only that our business, but their business can survive and thrive. And so I just want to come before the city and thank Councilman Barlow, the mayor, the council, Betsy Fretwell, Scott Adams, everybody that was a part of this, Bill Arnt. I think it was a great, I support it. Thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. Yes, please.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. The question, stay there, Stevens. I just wanted to say that I know there's been a lot of to-and-fro discussion behind the scenes on how this is going. And, you know, it's like, you guys are neighbors, and so Stevens is using a lot of adverbs like potentially and possibly, et cetera, et cetera. So it sounds like he understands a part of a conversation in a certain way, and I'd like to know if you feel the same way here today in front of the council before we vote.
Councilman Coffin, we had a meeting two days ago where we discussed all this, and we really aired it out. And in that meeting, I represented to Mr. Spawn that was witnessed by a whole number of city officials, including Mr. Arnt and city manager, Betsy Tred-
Tredwell.
Tredwell, I'm sorry. That, I think the biggest issue for Mr. Spawn was in trying to get a reconfigured use permit for his real estate, was to have egress for wheelchairs. That was his first concern, out the back of the property, which abuts the rail line and that would come around the side of the building. And there was a bunch of discussion about where the property line fell, et cetera, et cetera. But once we determine that, if in fact, the pre-existing real estate, there are needs and emergency egress around the side of the building, I pledge to grant an easement, a recordable easement that would run with the land for the three feet or five feet or six feet, whatever, necessary to provide that corridor for wheelchair access. And then in terms of parking, we don't, because we don't know, we haven't done a plot plan, actually, where our buildings are actually going to sit. We're not quite sure what the city's going to need for the turnaround ability, if you will, of fire trucks and emergency vehicles, et cetera. So we've got to accomplish that. There's been discussion of a cul-de-sac kind of thing to kind of, so that they can turn around. Once we figure all that, where we can get our parking, then we're going to discuss with Mr. Spawn, where we could possibly do a parking lot that they, that his events at his building could then be used for overflow parking and things like that.
Is there a fraction, have you determined a fraction of your business based upon some retail, some wholesale, industrial? I don't know if you're going to do retail there. Is that correct?
We can only sell merchandise by law, but we do plan to have, we can have a tasting room, correct?
Yes.
We can have a tasting room, so we absolutely want to invite the public down to take tours. It's a huge draw. If you look at the way it's done in Park City and places in Colorado with facilities like ours, so we can have the public down and they can, we'll have a t-shirt shop and merchandise and stuff like that, but not a bar, really. We can't-
Okay. The reason I mention this is because I was hoping to give direction to staff if Councilman Barlow agrees that to our staff, that we try not to be, particularly the planners, if we try not to be too much sticklers on the beauty of the project, because that frequently comes in, there's X number of landscaping and so many inches of this and feet of that, that if, we can give them some space to play with so that if we don't take it up with beautification features, that possibly it could enable you and your neighbor to get along better, have a little more space, because sometimes those things consume a lot of space. It sounds to me like you're not presenting, you're on an industrial area, I mean, Mesquite with a railroad siding.
Correct.
Now, so you're not having to put the city's best foot forward from the standpoint of beautification. It's for, this is for purpose, so I hope that maybe that would help you, and I don't know what, again, it's up to the councilman, but it occurs to me that might be room for compromise from the city requests of you to help enable, in essence, more room.
Okay, thank you. How about Ms. Arnt? Could you respond to that question or comment by councilman?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Councilman, to your question, and Mr. Spawn alluded to this also, we like to plan for success, and obviously, we think we know we have a partner that is experiencing success. And Mr. Spawn referenced what we did on the other side of City Parkway on Mesquite to help Rick's restoration and future businesses among that area. The business is putting in and upgrading the sanitary sewer or the septic, likely sewer. They have to put a lift station to actually help with putting that line in, so there's significant expense there. The actual right-of-way, the city right-of-way for vehicles is likely more than we need for vehicles, and so there should be an opportunity, and we haven't committed to this because we haven't studied it yet, but there should be an opportunity for evaluating on-street parking, which really should help everybody. It should help the distillery, it should help Mr. Spawn's business. And as we upgrade this property and help this business, we're mindful that there are other businesses along this street. We really think, by the city looking strategically, what can we do to help this area? We can help not just these two businesses, but other businesses on Mesquite. So I've committed personally to have our parking services manager, Brandy Stanley, do an evaluation of what we can do for parking. That's also a free resource to Jonathan and his team as they go through city planning to think through a global parking plan. In addition to the right-of-way, there is some land owned by NDOT because it's right up against the overpasses for 95-515. We'll look at that, but even with just the land that the city directly controls through right-of-way and the site itself, we think we're going to come up with a great solution that will really help both businesses.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions?
I would like to say one more thing, if I could.
Yes, please.
And this was the first time I've heard this, that when we were talking about the easements, part of what I think I just heard, I just want to clarify, is that the easements would be granted only if they were needed for our current development. Is that correct? Because part of the concern is future development. As if, because obviously you guys are a tenant now, but if at some point in the future you guys left, the westbound exits, there is not room for an exit on that building. So it's like, I'm not only trying to secure easements for now, but also potentially in the years to come.
Ms. Arnt, do you want to address that, please?
Yes, thank you. I think our agreement connotates that. So we have information from Mr. Spawn about his intended use. We had some initial thinking from his architect on how that emergency exit aisle could look. We need more information to figure out the right solution. The other thing is common with commercial and industrial property that is situated near vacant land is we have to make sure that we know exactly where that property line is. So I've also offered our city surveyor- So, I've also offered our city surveyor, Alan Ricky, to make sure that we know exactly where the city's property line starts and stops. Alan is, I think, the best in the business. He's a great surveyor, and I'll take his survey to the bank every time. So, we will offer that service as well to make sure, so that if Mr. Vaughn needs that and the property line is so tight to the building that he can't get that exit aisle in, as Mr. Hensley indicated, that we will figure it out. If the property line, for some reason, is farther and there's enough land there, then the exit aisle could land on Mr. Vaughn's own property. But we are committed to working it. We have asked, we've contemplated in our agreement with Jonathan and his team, a site plan from Mr. Vaughn, just so that we can know exactly what he wants to do with his building. And then, there is that good faith requirement to accommodate the easement. And as Jonathan had indicated, he has said in a meeting with city officials that he is committed that if it's necessary to put that easement in.
So, that's a matter of record made here. Is that okay with you?
Yes, and just one more point of clarification, if I could. The, and this was the first time I heard this also, is that part of the land purchase is, there's 330,000 of credits for sewer going in there to offset that cost. I didn't know anything, I'm just asking for clarification. Is that for just their property, or is that for that district?
Ms. Arnt, please.
It's, the sewer credit, for the record, Bill Arnt, the sewer credit is contemplated directly because of the expense that the distillery has to put in for their business. So, they're putting in the sewer line, they're putting in the lateral, they have to put in a lift station as well. The lateral and the lift station benefit just them. I think the extension of the sewer, long-term, should help generally all the properties in the area. I defer to City Public Works, who's probably in the audience. They have been great. We have worked with David Bowers and his team on this issue, but there still will need to be additional expense from Mr. Vaughn or other property owners if they want to tie into the sewer. And that lift station, because it's a private lift station, you actually have to do a lift station per individual business, per individual line. That's my understanding, I'm not an engineer, so.
You know, I'd like to ask.
Hopefully, I got it right.
Right, Director of Development of the community, you know, it's Public Works, you're forever in my brain. Your title now is?
Executive Director of Community Services.
Thank you, and I will forever forget it, but would you please address this?
For the record, I want to say this. Yes, Mayor, the extension of the main line would service any properties adjacent there. The lateral would service just the individual property, as the lift station would also. But the main line extension needs to be extended to get to the property, would be available for any properties along that corridor.
And does that help, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, absolutely.
No further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn-Tase. Okay, any other comments, questions from council here? This is exciting, let's get the show going.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselman.
This is exciting, and you all can come back. Yeah, the mayor and I, just this past Saturday? No, what was it, Friday? When were we at Tenea Creek?
I think it was Friday, but it might have been Saturday.
We go to so many events, they all mess together. I believe it was Friday, we had an opportunity to do the ribbon cutting at Tenea Creek. And what a time, Mayor, having an opportunity to see what's taking place in downtown Las Vegas, the historic West Las Vegas community. And the number of brewing modules that's inside of this facility is amazing. I mean, if you all haven't had an opportunity to go out and visit Tenea Creek on Bonanza and 8th Street, you need to get by there. And it was very interesting, because it was 10 o'clock in the morning, and the place was packed. I mean, it was jam-packed at 10:00 in the morning. And I knew Las Vegas, you know, people in Las Vegas drink. But I'm not sure if I started ever drinking at 10:00 in the morning, but the place is packed, and it was very good to see that. And I know that this is the type of client and clientele that you all will be bringing specifically with your various bourbons, that, congratulations once again on the gold medal, as well as the silver medal for both. And I do need some assistance in regards to the both of you in regards to this vote. So, bring me both bottles, if you will.
Could someone help me out? I would like the city council members.
David, I'm sorry, I, in situations like this, I must have leverage in order to get votes passed.
For those of you watching at home, he is not going to open them or drink them.
Your Honor, is it 10:00 yet?
Somewhere.
I'm going to pay for that for my colleague there.
That's a beautiful bottle.
That was his bottle.
So, just for the record, I'm paying for both of those bottles, out of my personal pocket. I am leveraging votes here. Those are my gifts to them. And I couldn't be more excited then to have the economic development in the downtown area, specifically, as we continue to grow and look for a variety of developments in the city to really bring about a sense of culture, and this most definitely does just that. And I can't wait to, you know, continue to work with you all as you continue to grow. I mean, you're already busting at the seams, and you don't have enough space, as you mentioned, you know, to get things going. And I really want to thank you also for working with Mr. Vaughn. You know, I've been working with him for many, many years. I've been knowing him, I think, over 15 years. Really good guy, wonderful person. And let's work together collectively to make sure that we continue to be good neighbors and make sure that he has an opportunity to grow with you, with us, in this area of the community. I'm going to continue to press my staff on the city side to make sure that, specifically with the land and its configuration, it's kind of weird shaped, and so, for that, I believe there's things that we can do, from an on-street parking element to assist with the concerns as far as parking, making sure that those emergency exits that Mr. Vaughn spoke about, you know, having access around his building, that we can basically live in harmony in this very weird-shaped area. And so, for that, I just want to say congratulations to you once again, look forward to working with you. And.
Excuse me, if I might, I just asked Suri, but it can't get through to her, you know, on our cellphone. Biba must moriendum, obviously, it must be a takeoff on Latin. What does it mean?
It was rumored that that was a saying of a gunfighter, of a legendary gunfighter, and it was, "Drink today, for tomorrow we die."
Wonderful, that was on the medallion in here, but what a classy bottle.
Thank you.
It's a quote from Seneca.
You want to pass it?
I'm going to save this bottle for your next state-of-the-city speech, so that I might get through it.
Oh, you are in trouble. You want me to campaign for you? Forget that, baby.
Mayor, grab the bottle like this.
Okay, do we have a motion? This is.
We do, we do have a motion moving forward, Mayor, and that motion would be to follow status recommendations for approval subject to all conditions, and most definitely, good luck to you. And let's make this happen and continue to grow our downtown and continue to make it exciting. Thank you.
There's a motion, please, on Agenda Item 47 first. So, please vote. And please, wow, that come up fast. Did you get a sip down there? That was a first. Motion carries, and on Agenda Item 50, please, Councilman.
Yes, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you, this is motion to approve on Agenda Item 50. Good job. Please post.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Is wonderful. We're so proud.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion carries. And you seriously are going to keep those bottles, or are you going to return them? Oh, okay.
$300 each.
Wow, okay.
It's pretty expensive to me.
All right, we're on to Agenda Item 48, and this item will be heard after planning discussion items. So, we are going to move to the planning items. As we all know, Agenda Item 49 was abated to the 15th of, second meeting in June, whatever the date is. Is it the 15th? June 15th. And now, we will go on to Agenda Item 50, we've done, so we're into 51, correct? All right. Boards and commissions, the band's item for possible action, audit oversight committee, Craig Rosevier, term expiration September 5, 2016, has resigned. Procedure for this committee requires appointment, reappointment by the mayor with ratification by the city council. Options are appoint a new committee at large member to fill the seat and begin a two-year term. I am prepared to make a motion to appoint Joseph Throneberry to this vacancy, and ask for your approval. And that's my motion. And all, please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Throneberry. Are you here, Throneberry? How about coming down just for a quick second or two? And if you would be introduced by our esteemed head of our audit.
Mayor and council, this is.
Wait, you're, you are.
Oh, for the record, Radford Snellling, city auditor. Mayor and council, this is Joseph Throneberry, and he's joining us as of just now, and I'll let him give you a little bit of background on himself.
Please do so.
Thank you, good morning, council and mayor. My name is Joe Throneberry, I am currently the principal fraud investigator assigned to managing investigations for Capital One here in the western region, based out of Las Vegas. Since coming to Las Vegas about a year ago now, I've been very active in the community. Currently, Vice President of the Association of Certified Fraud Examiners, as well as several other professional investigative associations that have chapters here in Las Vegas. I look forward to serving on the committee, and thank you for your time and consideration for selecting me to the committee today.
Thank you, we welcome you. Thank you, thanks, Mr. Snellling. Okay, we now, let's see, Agenda Item 52, discussion for possible action regarding the appointment of members to the Neighborhood Partners Fund Board for fiscal year 2016-17, which is all wards. Appointments, Ward 1, Staff Designee Anne Kilponen. Ward 1 Neighborhood Rep Brian Knudsen. Ward 3, Staff Designee Maria Norero. Ward 4, Staff Designee Anthony Roggerio. Reappointment, Mayor's Designee Greg Toussaint. Ward 2, Staff Designee Vicki Skilbred. Ward 2 Neighborhood Rep Sharice Holmes. Ward 3 Neighborhood Rep Lance Kirk. Ward 4 Neighborhood Rep Beth Bureeswitch? Bureeswitch? Sorry, I'm sorry to do that, Beth. Ward 5 Designee Tanya Jackson-Renter. Ward 5 Neighborhood Rep A.J. Powell. Ward 6 Neighborhood Rep Larry Schultz. Ward 6 Staff Designee Christine Kramer. And that will be my motion. So, please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Are you voting also?
Yes.
Will you please include Councilman Barlow?
For the record?
Yes, move for approval.
Agenda Item 53, bills eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill Number 2016-16. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor, thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2016-16, in order to change the name of the Department of Detention and Enforcement to the Department of Public Safety and to provide for other related matters.
Mayor, I would like to congratulate the Department of Public Safety for the name change, and move for approval.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, but Councilman Anthony would like to make a comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. About a year and a half ago, I was selected to be on the board for the Commission on Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. This is the governing body that kind of sets a gold standard for law enforcement agencies in the United States. And if you are accredited, you meet the highest standards in law enforcement that deal with policies and procedures and practices, and you're really considered kind of the top in law enforcement. So, when I was selected to the board, I went with our city manager, and I said, is our Department of Enforcement and Detention a member of Kalia? And they were not, so I asked her to look into it, and I'm really honored to say that our detention enforcement is going through the accreditation process. They've hired an accreditation manager, they filed. It's going to take a couple of years. This is a very rigorous proposal to go through to eventually be accredited, and really, this is the, I see this as the first stage. I mean, you have to have the appropriate name for your department to start with, and this is, this is the beginning. I'm looking forward to having, we're going to have assessors come in, they're going to go through the files and make sure all the standards are in place, and this is not an easy thing to do. And I really appreciate Chief Freeman and her staff stepping up and wanting to go through this and becoming eventually considered the top law enforcement agency in, on the country. So, thank you for doing that, and I think this is why this is an important step.
This is step number one. How long a process, Councilman, do you think is going to be?
It's about two years. They have things they have to go through, there's assessors that come in, there's a mock assessment that they're going to go through that I'm sure we will all be aware of and maybe even participate in, and that's going to tell them what else they need to do. And then, they're brought to the national convention, wherever that's going to be. We just had one last week in St. Louis, and it's really a big deal when these departments come in and they can say that they meet national standards in law enforcement, that they meet the best standards in the country, and they're very proud. I mean, they're very proud to be able to do that. So, they didn't have to do that, they can just say they're a public safety agency, but I appreciate them stepping up and doing that.
Thank you, so this is part of that process.
Yes.
Thank you very much. There is a motion, please vote, and please post. And that carries unanimously. Way to go, go to work more, okay. Agenda Item 54, Bill Number 2016-17. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2016-17, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to authorize under certain circumstances the early supplemental improvement plans in relation to the final approval of required traffic and drainage studies and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Thank you, this is motion to approve. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. On Agenda Item 55, Bill Number 2016-18. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read, please?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2016-18, First Amendment, in order to revise various requirements and limitations pertaining to medical marijuana establishments, including a license fee adjustment for certain license categories and to provide for related matters. Mayor and council, before you get involved in the discussion, I know that there are a number of proposed amendments to the First Amendment that is before you today. With your permission, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Stevens.
Please.
Well, I don't have any amendments to propose, but I'm here for any questions that anybody might have about them.
Yes, I actually have a question, point of clarification. During the recommending meeting, I believe maybe two meetings ago, there was a question in regards to on and off premise signage. And so, I wanted to have a level of understanding, because one of the applicants came before us who owns a billboard on their property, and they wanted to advertise on the billboard, but have been informed or instructed that they're unable to do so. And so, I want to, someone to explain for clarification for all those who are in this industry, what the guidelines are specifically as it relates to Title 19 and the signage code within the city of Las Vegas.
Your Honor, Tom Perico, Planning Director, for the record, I'd be happy to help with that. If you, if a property owner owns a billboard on their property, and they would like to use that for on-premise advertising, they could request that of council if it meets the standards, the development standards within that zoning district, they could do that, but they would have to relinquish the special use permit that allows them to do off-premise, and they could not use that sign for off-premise advertising. If the sign, the freestanding sign, would then be a freestanding sign, on-premise freestanding sign, if it doesn't meet the regulations or the development standards for that zoning district, then they could ask for variance. Now, specifically for a medical marijuana dispensary, the code is very clear that you can have one sign, 30 square feet. can have one sign thirty square feet, and that is non-wavable. So the code would have to be amended to make that wavable, to allow council additional discretion on the type of signage on-premise. And again, if that billboard meets the development standards for that zoning district of a freestanding sign, they could give up the right to use it for off-premise and use it for on-premise. If it doesn't meet the standards, they would then need a variance in addition to a waiver from the requirements of Title 19 sign code for dispensaries.
At the time of early commentary, I asked for public comment, and Vicki Higgins had requested comment. Do you want to come up here now? And does that clarify for you the question that you had asked earlier on? If you would, Mr. Perigo, please stay so that I think you have answers that you might be able to answer for her.
Hi.
And if you'd restate your name, please.
Vicki Higgins, for the record. One of my concerns with the advertising is it's inconsistent throughout the city. The billboard issue, if you just got lucky enough to have one on your property, you can use it. We've got limited advertising for different establishments throughout our state. If we could bring our advertising requirements into line, for instance, if I'm working out in North Las Vegas and I create a logo that's accepted by the state, but then I can't use it in the city, do I have to have a separate logo to work, to sell my product and advertise within the city? Advertising does not allow, the restrictions put on here does not allow for the tourists to come in and have a good comprehensive overview of what's available for the different areas. What we're going to be looking at for the city dispensaries unfortunately is the tourists. And I understand that, that's where the big money's coming from. But we, as medical cannabis patients of Nevada, are not going to be wanting to pay those additional fees. They can't do promotions, they can't do this, they can't have signage that's a decent sign. One facility has, I'm hearing neon is going up, another one has a billboard, another one has this. You can't advertise within public view. I understand the restrictions, but it's very unclear, and I think fair market advertising is really an issue.
You've made your point. Thank you. I think it will be under consideration.
I appreciate that.
But thank you for making your point, and I appreciate your coming back. And thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to speak out and address something that she said. When you go into business and when the people apply for their dispensaries here within the city, they knew what our rules were. They knew what the county rules were. It's a matter of business that if you don't want certain rules, you shouldn't go where they exist. If you don't think you can make a profit, which I'm sure that every single one of these in another year and a half is going to make a very significant profit, but if you can't, it's your job to decide where you go as a business. It isn't, we didn't say, oh, you're all here, so we're going to do such and such. We said, these are our rules. You apply, you apply and go by those rules. What I'm bothered with right now is when I hear from individuals all over the place, the pressure that they're receiving from the industry in order to have these changes made so they can compete. They knew what the competition would be and what they had to compete against when they got there. And that's part of business. That's part of selecting where you go, your locality and things like that. I want to make that, because I, okay, that's it.
And, and your honor, I'd like to add.
Thank you, yes, Mr. Perigo.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you, your honor. I'd like to add that, you know, the advertising plan that's contained within Title VI is very different than the signage in Title 19. The advertising regulations are set up in order to address how people can generally advertise this kind of a business. Title 19 is really about the time, place, and manner, and those are based on public safety and aesthetics. So it's more of a land use development standard question for the sign. What does it look like? How tall is it? Where can it be? And all that kind of stuff. Advertising and our concerns about how this is viewed throughout the community is handled under Title VI under the business licensing. Two separate things.
Thank you. And I see Ms. Duddleston's come up. She doesn't come up unless she has something to add. Would you introduce yourself and add your comments?
Yes, your honor. For the record, Karen Duddleston, Deputy Planning Director over Business Licensing. In the proposal before you today, one of the goals and tasks that we were to give, given, was to make the outdoor signage portion of the advertising plan to mirror that in Clark County, and what is before you today does indeed do that. The advertising plans which govern the advertising of medical marijuana businesses that are licensed with the county, one of the tasks that staff was given was to have the section on billboards mirror the restrictions that are in the unincorporated Clark County area. And what is before you today is the wording that the city attorney's office put together to accomplish that.
May I ask who asked the staff to do that?
Yeah. That was a request, I believe, from Councilman Coffin.
Thank you. That's my segue. Your honor, if I might be recognized for just a minute here. May I?
But may I ask, just on the process here, if in fact it's a request, and I'm hearing from Mayor Pro Tem, he would have made the same request, would that not be something that would then come back to the council for approval?
Maybe, maybe I could weigh in for a second.
Please.
So the ordinance before you was requested and is sponsored by Councilman Coffin. So included in his direction to staff in drafting that ordinance was what Karen just articulated. That's one component of it. Obviously, there's several other changes anticipated in the business licensing process for this regulated industry. So this is the point in the process, in addition to the recommending committee hearing, where the mayor, the full mayor and council get the opportunity to evaluate the pros and cons of any given ordinance, any component or section of that ordinance, to be able to say, we like that section or we don't like that section. You vote on it, you vote it in, or you vote it out. So any of you can sponsor an ordinance, and then we, we work with that sponsor, with the city attorney's office, to try and get the language prepared for your final consideration before implementation. So that's where you are in the process right now with this bill.
And I see my conundrum here is because I have had to abstain from anything to do with anything to do with medical marijuana. So how I would approach this, I mean, my concern just in process, not in anything to do with marijuana, but just some issue that a council person has asked staff to do, then it should, as a rule, come back to the full board to vote in or not. It would seem.
Well, we may be having a little bit of a different conversation. So, you know, obviously, it's the council's discretion today whether you move forward with this ordinance as presented, if you choose to amend it, to omit things that you're uncomfortable with, or to add things that are germane to the, to the bill. You could do that. That's what you have latitude to do now. Maybe in briefings, mayor, we can talk about council requests of staff regarding the development of ordinances. I'm happy to go over our process now.
I think that's a whole different process. And yes, that's what I'm addressing here. Because I've had to abstain and will be abstaining on this as well. So it's just the process, and if in fact it doesn't, maybe it does in the formal document, which I wouldn't vote on either, but just to go ahead if that was the issue and follow the county and do as they do, is, that was my question, really.
Your honor, if I could, I think there's, there's two very different questions. The first one is, are billboards allowed in your advertising plan? And under the current ordinance, the director could not approve any advertising plan which contained billboards. Anyone requesting billboards had to come to the city council in order to advertise any place that could be seen from the public right-of-way. You had one come before you, I think it was in December or January, that was requested billboards and was granted that in their licensing, in their advertising plan. That's the issue that is addressed in the ordinance, the Title VI ordinance today. The other question that has been asked is, can you use a billboard that is on your property, an off-premise sign, for on-premise purposes? It's a much broader issue which may or may not affect a variety of types of businesses, and that's what I believe Mr. Perigo needs to address. But two separate issues.
Mayor?
Well, and I may, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Your honor.
Yes.
I'm still waiting for.
And I wasn't finished with the first question.
I'll pull off then.
So in relation to, going back to your point, Mr. Perigo, in relation to someone owning an off-premise, off-premise billboard on their property, what must they do to revert that to on-premise?
I was thinking about that, and I'd probably have to work with the attorney's office to get the exact process, but essentially what needs to happen is, again, they have to relinquish the right to use that as off-premise, which is to give up the special use permit. And then if it meets the development standards for that zoning category as a freestanding sign, then they can use it for on-premise advertising. If it doesn't, they would have to request a variance. And again, for a dispensary, they, they are not allowed to do that currently because the requirement to have only one thirty-square-foot sign is non-wavable. So that, that, the code would have to change to even consider it for a dispensary. The order in which these things occurred, I can imagine someone might be a little concerned to give up their right for off-premise advertising if they're not then granted a variance to use it as a freestanding sign within that commercial district. So exactly that process, I'm not sure, but that's essentially what needs to happen.
Right. And I just wanted to get that flushed out so that, because those in the audience are not, not only the, the only ones, they are not the only ones paying attention to the sign issue. There's a number of dispensaries that are interested in this conversation as well. So that's why I'm asking the pointed question, so that it can be placed on the record adequately so that everyone will have an opportunity to hear the same explanation from you as the director as to what the guidelines and how Title 19 spells out the, the language. And, and the opposite end of the question is, if in fact you do convert from the off-premise, what those benchmarks will be to convert to an on-premise to include those conditions that you just laid out? So I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'd like to ask also in that question or comment from Councilman, is that in perpetuity? You have relinquished your right on the off-premise signage? Is that's in perpetuity even for a duration of time?
Well, I, I don't know that we've ever dealt with this exact question, but I think, I suppose somebody could come back and request of council a special use permit for off-premise advertising. I don't know why they couldn't do that at some point in the future.
Mayor, may I just weigh in really quickly? We're, we're talking about right now a bill that Councilman Coffin has requested to bring back to council for consideration in Title 19 to deal with this specific issue. This bill doesn't include that language. And so I think staff needs, based on what we've heard here today, and there may be more instruction, we need to go back, work with the city attorney's office, try and get a bill drafted that addresses the issues in Title 19 regarding these on and off-premise issues, so that we have a, a uniform and well-researched answer to a lot of the questions that you're bringing up here today versus us trying to answer them right now without having had that research done. I think it could be very difficult for the industry people to really figure out what they should or shouldn't do until we actually have a bill drafted and ready for your consideration. That's just my recommendation, because I, I don't want people taking one part of what they think they thought they heard today and making a business decision about it.
And I might add to that, Ms. Rettwell, if I may, that to me, yes, this is items specific to medical marijuana, and I'm taking it out of that to a bigger, future, precedent-setting, whatever. And so I can't vote on the medical marijuana piece of today's issue if in fact it's their decision they want to do it. But I'm looking at how this goes forward for us. So, I mean, to me, I think what you're saying is correct, but that's their decision to make. Thank you.
And, and that's fine, but also, in addition to that, we do have Title IX, Title VI in what's before us today, right? And so if you could speak to Title VI in relation to the signage, that would be helpful as well.
Title VI signage is the, contained in the advertising plan restrictions. And each medical marijuana establishment is to propose their advertising plan to the director currently. And if that advertising plan meets the guidelines, it can be approved. If they are proposing any advertising which can be seen by the, in, within the public right-of-way such as billboards, that has to be forwarded to the council. The director cannot approve those currently. In this proposal, it would amend those advertising requirement to allow outdoor signage if they meet the thousand-foot distance separation from parks, schools, and churches. That language that is proposed today is consistent with the language and the operations for those dispensaries in Clark County. So it would be the same.
Your honor.
Yes, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, your honor. I just want to say that, first of all, I know there was some discussion here or an assertion that maybe this was for somebody in particular, and I know staff said it, I want to say it again. I requested this bill so that dispensaries in this new business and the city limits of Las Vegas could compete with businesses outside our city limits. And we had no way of knowing, your staff had no way of knowing, the council had no way of knowing, because the council and the county commission and the councils in Henderson and North Las Vegas were working simultaneously on these same problems. And what happened is that our, our rules set in our ordinances became, as you know, how it can happen, the most stringent of all, which means that the, it makes the dispensaries within the city limits non-competitive with the others for general public business. And so that's the reason for it. It had no particular favoritism to any one dispensary or any one ownership group, but rather to just make business happen better in the city. So that's why you have this bill in front of you, which only affects Title VI, not 19, and I suppose cannot take any amendments from 19 unless the city attorney would say, it fits the requirements of advertising and it's already been handled and all that stuff. And maybe an amendment today could be done, I'm not sure. But amendments are, are welcome if, should the majority of the council see an amendment potential here today to Title VI, because this was, again, it was a work in progress until it was thankfully passed by the, the committee a month ago. And that's the recommending committee. So you see a lot of the protections that are still in there. They're not going to be removed, but they're smoothed out. Very high bond requirements are being reduced, they're not being eliminated, but they're being reduced. The hours of operation are being allowed to be a little longer. So it, staff did what was requested of the council, and that was, this council member, and that was to mirror as closely as possible Clark County. And we can't change much of the revenue collection because in fundamental terms, the county relied more upon revenue as a, a percentage of revenue, as their source of revenue, whereas we relied stronger on the high licensing fees. The high licensing fees were keeping people out of business. But thanks to the actions of this council, we were able to lower some of those fees to allow people, for instance, to sell from cultivation outside the city into the city, into our businesses, because we were not getting enough grow, or what we call cultivation operations inside the city limits. So this is going to help remove some of that problem. There was a comment about people knowing what a business is, knowing the rules before they go into business in an area, and they should be responsible since they see what they get and whether or not they can do business. The problem is, this was a whole brand-new business with a whole set of brand-new rules. They all came at the same time. The business was created by the state and us at the same time. We tried to set rules. So nobody who really could be in business knew what the rules were before they got into business. It just, they had to secure these leases on, long-term leases on property, and I'm not sure they even knew how far away it was to a school or to a martial arts studio or whatever it is that we feel may be an appropriate distance from a dispensary or a grow or a production operation. And sorry to use those terms of art, but I think we all get the picture here. So, so really, I think this approaches, there's no bias in this, it just treats everybody the same way. It tries to get closer to the competitors as far as Title VI can allow us to get there. Title 19 does need a bill, which has been requested to do somewhat the same thing, but there's no exact goal there, there's no exact language proposed by me or any other member of the council that I know of. It's just the same order to try to bring us into more conformity with the competitors so that our, our people in the city limits who have invested a lot of money. so that our, our people in the city limits who have invested a lot of money don't just lose money simply because the rules are what they are. That wouldn't be fair to anybody that we have invited in to do business. And so this bill is, is open for amendments if, unless the amendment is so far apart from the advertising that it would require new advertising, in which case that really ought to go into another bill. But it is open. If somebody's got amendment language prepared that they feel would make this bill work better, I would welcome that to come now, Your Honor. I think that's important. This process is open. Let's, if Your Honor would mind, could we open up the process to amendments if there are any proposed by members of the council or members of the public?
Okay, thank you. I would check with Legal. Is that appropriate to open it up? Can we do that to amendments at this time, or does that have to be agendized as such and wait for another time?
We can hear what the proposals are, and then we'll decide whether they're fairly within the scope of what's been advertised.
And so you will advise us, please, as we go along?
Yes, absolutely.
Councilwoman Tarkanian wanted to make comment before we do that?
My first comment, and I decided I'm going to be nicer when I first put my button on. You know, I started not for even medical marijuana, and I listened to people who came here, and they spoke with their heart. And knowing cases that needed help, I went along with the medical marijuana. But I must tell you, I think we have people who speak to us with fork tongues, because I'm told, oh, we want these all so, in fact, it was stated in front of us, let's just make it like a drugstore. You should be able to go and buy it because it's like a medicine. I agreed with that. And in my ward, I made sure that we would have somebody that would hit the different areas of the ward. But you know what? That's not what's happened. What happened is the sophisticated, the sophisticated consultants that seemed to be involved with almost every applicant, they came in and they got them so they didn't go way out into all the other wards. No, they went to two wards, right? You don't have any, Ricky, do you? It went to Coffin and myself. I'm just talking. Ricky, you don't have any dispensaries, do you?
Yes, I have one on the Indian Reservation.
Oh, one on the Indian Reservation. But what I'm trying to say is, I think we need a little time to go through some of this, to see how it works before we cry, oh, my gosh, the dam's falling apart. Forgetting that, however, on the sign situation is not going to come up until we go into Title IX, and Mr. Councilman Coffin is then going to make another change in Title IX, is my understanding, right?
You mean 19.
Oh, 19, I meant 19, yes.
Ma'am, we have another bill coming, and you're welcome to participate in drafting.
That would be nice, but I do have to disagree with you, Mr. Coffin, on one thing, and that is, that, what's leading us to this Title IX, in which you alluded to already, you did know, it was one person. How many people do we have that have dispensaries that have a billboard on them already? We have one, and that one person went to you, right?
Your Honor, through you to Councilwoman Tarkanian, I think I know who the councilwoman is referring to, and I heard from representatives of one dispensary that's not in Ward III, in your ward, Councilwoman.
Yes, it is.
And I can't remember, I didn't know for sure if they had gone to you first or not, and I asked them to go see you, because I felt uncomfortable just trying to make a decision based upon something that's really your business. However, it didn't come out the way it would favor one particular dispensary or another, including the one in your ward. It simply doesn't favor any one business.
Well, I think it favors the one business that has a sign, but I'll end it there, because I don't want to take up a lot of time on something like that. We can do that when we discuss the Title 19 change.
If it did, they got lucky.
Let me tell you, they got lucky, and they came, and they spoke with you, and then we had that change, which is now going to go to 19, and we'll discuss it when we do that. That's all I wanted to say. I just feel that this is being done for one person.
Okay, I'm going to be specific here. Mr. Brown, I know you're not standing up for your health, so it would seem to me, I know you would like to make some comment here, and having been around the block a few times on this issue, please.
Thank you. Not on the signage issue. I do have an amendment that I'd like to talk about.
Okay.
Okay? For the record, Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street. With me is Mark James, who's a principal of Boulevard Medical, and I, of course, represent Boulevard Medical. We have a cultivation and a production special use permit, as well as compliance permit in the city and a provisional certificate with the state. My client needs to move to another location, and therein is the issue, okay? At the present time, the city has no mechanism for my client to be able to move. So we want to take advantage of Councilman Coffin's bill and his offer to sponsor our amendment, and we know we would still have to, we're fortunate enough to have, you know, what we're asking for as part of the bill. We know we still need to go out and get a special use permit for our new location. We know we need to have the state's approval. There are things that we need. But my understanding is that the city attorney, Mr. Steed in particular, has drafted, has drafted, he's not recommending, as he pointed out, he has drafted a proposed amendment for consideration. We're pleased with what he has to offer, and hopefully Councilman Coffin will add that to part of the bill, and that will let us have the ability to move.
Okay, thank you. What I'm going to do now is ask Mayor Protem to take over here, because we're getting into issues I think are a bit tenuous for me with my son being in the business, so if you'll take over.
Thank you, Mayor. You bet. Mr. Steed, do you want to read that into the record?
Yes, just a little background. Under the current code, there's no mechanism, as Mr. Brown points out, for the, for a person who wants to make a change in ownership or a change in location to proceed under an already existing compliance permit. It's been fairly clear, I think, that the council doesn't want to see brand-new compliance permits starting over from scratch. So this would clarify that, once you have a compliance permit, you don't have to come get a new one if you're making changes, but you do have to come back to the council for those approvals. It's just not starting over from scratch. So that would be an amendment, it would be a brand-new section to the ordinance that would amend Section 6.9, Section 6.95.040 with a new subsection C that would say before a medical marijuana license has been issued to an applicant, changes to the corresponding medical marijuana compliance permit that has been issued by the city council may be made without having to apply for and receive a new compliance permit. However, such changes are subject to the notification and approval requirements of LVMC 6.06200 and 6.06210, as if the compliance permit were a business license. That means that if they had a license, they would have to come back to you. They don't quite yet have a license, but they still have to come back before you for those changes. They just don't have to start over with a new compliance permit.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Does that sound like what you discussed with Councilman Coffin?
I think we all agree that gives the opportunity to move if we follow what Mr. Steed has stated.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Could I just ask, and I agree that that should occur for them, but I don't understand then why in my ward where we have someone who found mold and they can't use what they have to move to the next place, the next door. I, I mean, if...
Unless it's a condition, they would have the ability to do that, from my understanding.
Well, would this then handle that for them?
I think so.
You know, I mentioned that to you the other day, I think, here, and I think you're aware of the, we have a group that's found mold in their building. All they want to do is go from that office to the next office where there is no mold.
If, if they are a business with an existing license or an existing compliance permit under this provision, if it's still a compliance permit change, yes, they would be able to go through the special use permit process for additional space, for an adjacent space, for an unrelated space, and come back to you and ask for that change through that process.
So that would allow that to happen? And you know the, the group I'm talking about, right? You know the mold building? Mary, I think I discussed it with Mary, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not, I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I said you, but it was Mary who was at our meeting. And I just want to make sure, I think this is good to have. I would like to make sure it covers some other little problems like that.
For the record, Mary McLehone, Business Licensing Manager, yes. It would handle the, them not having to come back before city council for a new compliance permit. There is one other issue that would still need to be addressed. That suite that they want to change to does not have a special use permit for all the activity that they would like to do. The special use permits for medical marijuana establishments, the way they work, they were very specific to cultivation, production, or dispensaries. It's my understanding that that suite that they're moving to, there are some concerns with that needing to come forward again to get a new special use permit, because it doesn't currently exist.
So they can do it, but they got to get an SUP? Okay, I got you, Mary.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And Councilwoman, thank you very much for your questions. Councilman Coffin, I will concur with you on several levels here. We had no idea how many, how many issues we were going to run into as we started this process a long time ago. We are continuously bending and flexing our codes to kind of fit the industry. I mean, we set our standards at one level. I certainly understand Councilwoman's frustration in regards to, you know, here's the rules, you know what the rules are, but we, the county set certain standards, we set certain standards, and Ms. Rettwell, it wasn't because we didn't try to work with Clark County to come across the board with the same set of standards. We tried that, and it didn't work that direction. But, so here we are today, bending and folding to match the county. So with that, Councilman, Councilwoman?
I wanted one more thing, if I could, please. Asking for amendments, just if I could, in check with Legal, where it says distance separation, it has teen dance center. Could we also include martial arts center? And, because I've had some concerns there. We have a lot of martial arts centers in my ward.
You would include martial arts in one of the distance separation?
Yeah, in other words, it has right down here as one of their points, it has teen dance center. I would just like to add under that martial arts center. That's all.
Let me, let me comment on that. I think it's within the scope. Two things that come to mind is, first of all, Councilman Coffin's desire was to loosen requirements, and to some degree, that is making them more stringent than, than the county, although that's not fatal. The other thing I would want to make sure is, we have on the record what it is about a martial arts studio that is like those other things that are listed. Now, if there's some evidence that martial arts studios have a lot of children in them, it would make sense, because all of those things that follow, that are in that list are uses that involve a lot of children.
Of children.
I don't know what the record is about martial arts instruction, so I think we would want to hear about that.
Well, I'm not talking, sir, I'm not talking about individual instruction. I'm talking about group instruction, where you have large groups that are competing against each other, which probably have as many as a dance studio would have.
That's exactly what I'm talking about as well. I'm saying, are these, are these, are these groups that involve youth, or are they groups that primarily involve adults? I don't know.
No, they primarily involve youth. I think when adults do it, I'm not sure, I don't do it, but I think when adults do it, they do maybe one-on-one or one-on-two, but for children, it's a group thing. And you'll go there and you'll see a class of 20 kids, 25 kids sometimes, you know, learning the instructions. So it is children.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Mr. Steed. Councilman Coffin, please.
Your Honor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor Protem, I think, I think an amendment proposed by Councilwoman Tarkanian could be appropriate if we were to narrow the scope of what a martial arts center would be, if it was, for example, we may have a definition, because under the child abuse or it is reporting requirements for employees in certain martial arts studios, I think there's statutory precedent and perhaps ordinance precedent on what is a youth-oriented martial arts center. And if there is one, then it makes sense that we could adopt such an exception to use for the state, for the spatial requirements, that that kind of martial arts studio, which caters to youth, could be included in this list. Now, for example, if you have a martial arts studio where fathers and sons, mothers and daughters come out and work together, and that can happen in many cases, then you wouldn't want to interfere with that. But I can see if you've got a youth-oriented martial arts studio, let's say, aimed at 12 and under, for example, again, I don't know what our, I don't know what our existing laws are, and if, if code can't figure it out now, I would propose to Councilwoman Tarkanian to add that in as an amendment to another bill to make it clear. And so it could be, I mean, I think you're right. This is very similar to a school. It is a school.
Could I just say, what if we said group martial arts centers?
Because that could, excuse me, Your Honor, through you, Your Honor, to Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Go ahead.
If we start to get into the defined terms of art over what things are, groups can be groups of adults, it can be groups of children and adults. I don't think we want to get into interfering when there is adult present with a child. I think the idea is, as she was proposing, children's group classes, but I don't know if we can proceed fast enough today to put that correct information in there. So I'm just saying, if you want to, you know, have a trailing bill that hits Title VI, unless the one affecting 19 can also be drafted so that it also touches VI, then, you know, you've got an opportunity very quickly coming up.
I have a suggestion, Councilman, and Councilwoman. Why don't we direct it, it's this over to Mrs. Duttelston to give us some...
Maybe they have an answer now, Mayor.
Mayor Protem, if I might, in our code, we have two definitions. We have martial arts instruction business, which means a commercial martial arts company, corporation, partnership that offers customers martial arts instructions for profit anywhere in the city, and we also have a martial arts studio, which is a business regardless of size, that does martial arts instruction. And it does not include nonprofit, like the YMCA or something like that. The broader definition is the martial arts instruction business, but nowhere in our code does it restrict or mention any age of any of the persons being instructed.
So it would be very difficult then to define that per our existing code on how that would, how we would define it, I think legally.
I believe you'd have to work with the city, with the city attorney's office, because we do not know out there in our martial arts what ages...
Correct.
Or if they have youth classes, or they're just offering one-on-one instruction, or if they're...
Is there an opportunity for Councilwoman to bring this back again, to amend this ordinance again, to include that once we define that?
You could, you could, Ms. Rettwell... You could do that, of course. Sorry, Val, I kind of jumped in. You can take two different approaches. You can include it today with one of those definitions, that's clear, or you can direct us to try and develop an amendment to this ordinance later and redefine martial arts studios to try and define who, who has youth and who doesn't. I don't know how we're going to go about doing that, but if that's what you would like for us to do, we could certainly try and work on that.
Councilwoman?
You know, it's just curious to me, haven't any of you guys gone to a martial arts studio and seen those kids all lined up? Who is it? It's not adults, it's kids. So I mean, how many of you have gone to a studio where you've seen a lot of adults lined up doing that?
I have.
Well, of course you have, I know that.
Then, why don't we propose this to Councilman Coffin, that we add these studios, martial arts studio definition at this time, and, and see how that works. Councilman Coffin, how do you feel about that?
I think a new bill is in order.
Yeah.
We're getting in the weeds on a bill that's ready to, to be passed, although we have not asked other laypeople here if they have suggested amendments. We've heard from...
Let's do this, let's go back.
Supreme Mubra lobbyists, but we haven't heard from laypeople if they are interested in asking for any amendments.
Well, this isn't a public comment period, so I'm going to ask Mr. Steed to read the original bill with the amendment, and we'll go from there. Can you do that, please? It's already been done, but it's fresh in our mind.
Well, I think you have to actually take a motion to amend the bill with the amendment that was presented...
Okay.
By Mr. Brown and read into the record by Mr. Steed. And if that amendment passes, then you consider the bill as a whole. Am I right, Val?
Well, that's certainly one way to do it. It's probably the more formal way, and traditionally, somebody wanted to make a motion to approve the First Amendment as changed by the amendment I read on behalf of Mr. Brown. That would be a proposed Second Amendment, and you would take a vote on that. If that vote fails, we, we could do it, this two-step process, but traditionally, we don't unless there are lots of little issues to be worked out.
So the motion would be to move, approve the bill with the First and Second Amendments?
It'd be, it'd be a motion to approve the bill as a Second Amendment, including the language that I read into the record.
Does anyone have any other comment on this, the suggested amendments to this bill? Madam, please. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Shanna Perry. I've been researching this industry every day for about five years nationally, cannabis, cannabis, cannabis. Clock is ticking. nationally, cannabis, cannabis, cannabis. Clock is ticking, money is draining. My question is this. All the billboards out there and all the advertisements out there for the adult industry, do they have all of these regulations as well, alcohol included, you know, all of that? So that's really my question and concern, especially moving forward into November. Clock's kind of ticking, so.
What I ask is if you had any more amendments to this bill.
Oh, no. I just wanted to ask that question as public.
I'll let our legal staff take that. Val, it's all yours.
Well, this chapter, Chapter 6.95, has some specific marijuana-related restrictions on advertising. It used to prohibit billboards in effect because all billboards can be seen from rights of way. That prohibition is eliminated. Now, you're subject to the regular rules that apply to all industries for billboards and for on-premise advertising. That's what this bill does. So to answer her question, although there are some existing rules that are more strict than the other things she mentioned, we're actually getting closer to what those have.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin, do you have a motion?
I now have a motion to amend and do pass this as a Second Amendment, I believe, Your Honor, with the language as proposed by our legal counsel.
Okay. Councilman, may I have another comment?
Yes, I was wondering if I could ask Legal and Mr. Coffin, if the term, instead of martial arts, if it could be teen martial arts center or youth martial arts center? Would that solve the problem?
It wouldn't because we don't have definitions of that. And it would be whatever you thought it might mean, or whatever I thought it might mean. And we need, we need something. I'd suggest that that be brought forward in the future. And maybe if we get some input from those who are impacted directly, we could come up with a way to define the different kinds of martial arts businesses in a way that would lend themselves to adding that provision here.
I will request a bill right now if Legal will work on it for me.
Okay.
Okay.
There's a motion to approve this bill as a Second Amendment. Would you like to vote?
This is without martial arts.
Without martial arts. Vote and please post. And that motion passes. Thank you very much for that wonderful discussion. We are on Agenda Item 56, Recommending Committee Bill Eligible for Adoption at a Later Meeting. Items 56 through 57, Bills 2016-22 and 2016-23 will be heard at a later meeting. We will move on to the new bills. Mr. James?
Mr. Mayor Protam, I just want to say thank you very much to you.
Good to see you, Mr. James.
To Councilman Coffin and Councilman Tarkanian and the whole council.
You bet.
Always good to see another old senator without his toga. It's amazing how you look human again.
Thank you, Senator. Good to see you. Welcome back, Mayor. We are on Agenda Item 58, New Bills.
Oh, I know. There was a correction there. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Bills 58 through 60. Bills number 2016-24, 2016-26 will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Monday, April 18, 2016. City Attorney, please read the bills.
On behalf of Your Honor, Bill Number 2016-24, in order to create the city of Las Vegas, special improvement district 1521, Galwin Road in Durango Drive, prescribing details in connection therewith and other matters written thereto. Bill Number 2016-25, in order to update the Unified Development Code, LVMC Title 19, to clarify land use regulations and definitions regarding nightclubs, by moving the land use table to allow nightclubs as permitted uses in the downtown entertainment overlay district, permitting a waiver of distance separation requirements between nightclubs and protected uses, and striking distance separation requirements between nightclubs and protected uses within the downtown overlay district and for other related matters. And finally, Bill Number 2016-26, in order to update LVMC Chapters 20.04 and 20.08 pertaining respectively to the city's flood control master plan and flood hazard reduction, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. The new bills, 2016-24 through 2016-26, are assigned to council members Anthony and Ross, and I will be filling in for Councilman Barlow. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 61, which is our closed session. A closed session meeting is called in accordance with NRS 288.220 to discuss labor issues. No motion is required for this item. We will go into closed session now, and we'll return shortly and continue on with the agenda. What? One what? We'll be back at 1:00. Oh, absolutely. 1:00 p.m.? It hasn't been publicly announced it's at 1:00, but we're making it a 1:00. Forty minutes? Okay, we will return at 1:00 o'clock. We're in recess. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
You want me to open it right now?
No, 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 no.
Are you sure?
No.
You're not going to share that? We need a party. Okay. One, two. We are ready. We have, we are reconvened. Public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district 1485, Alta Drive Landscape Maintenance FY 2017, Ward 1, with Councilwoman Tarkanian. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. And so, let's go.
I'm Pavelka, and I'm the city engineer with the Department of Public Works. And I have with me Alicia Hawk. She's our SID project engineer, and she's also in public works. So today, it's a public hearing for the annual assessment for SID number 1486. This district consists of 37 parcels along Alta Drive between Rancho and approximately 275 feet west of Lacy Lane. It has a total of 29.94 acres in the assessment. This SID covers the annual maintenance cost of landscape maintenance and utility services from the period from July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017. The total assessment will remain the same as it's been for the recent, previous years at $75,800, and is paid 100% by the property owners. No written protests have been filed by the city clerk's office.
Wow.
Any questions?
And how many units are in the area total?
There's 37 parcels.
Thirty-seven parcels. Interesting. Is there anyone from, well, do you want to ask anything, Mr. Parago, to this, please?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public wishes to be heard on this item? Big run to the microphone. No one. I'm going to close the public hearing. And on time, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Hi. My understanding is that no one from the district complained about the amount. Is that correct?
There was no written complaint, although we did have one homeowner who had recently purchased a home there that had an issue with the cost.
Oh, do you know if they knew about it before? They should have.
Yes, they should have been. Just through the closing, that would have been disclosed.
Well, I know you've been trying to keep the cost down, and I have had no contact from anybody pertaining to that or disagreeing with it, so I moved to approve.
Okay, we don't need to approve it or anything? It's just, on my paper, it's just public hearing?
It's a public hearing.
Oh, so we don't need to approve, okay?
Great. Thank you very much. And we'll go on to, oh, you have a question? I'm so sorry. And is that Agenda Item Number 63? Okay, that's also a public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district number 1516. That's Fremont Street Maintenance District FY 2017, Las Vegas Boulevard to 8th Street, Ward 3, with Councilman Coffin. Again, we have a public hearing, which I declare it open. And again, you'll announce your names, please.
Yes, for the record, I'm Alan Pavelka, and I have here with me Alicia Hawk. And this is a public hearing for the annual assessment for SID 1516, which is a district, oops, wrong one. Oh, it is, yes. It's, this district consists of 34 parcels with a total of 15.59 acres in the assessment. The district boundaries are Las Vegas Boulevard to the west, Ogden Avenue to the north, Carson Avenue to the south, and 8th Street to the east. This SID covers the cost of landscape maintenance, street cleaning, sign maintenance, security, public utilities, promotional events, and marketing for the Fremont East Entertainment District. Assessments for the district will be suspended from July 1, 2016 of this year through June 30 of 2017 due to the surplus of funds that we have that acquired through the previous assessments. Although no assessments are being levied, or NRS 271 requires the district to levy each year, the maintenance of the district is funded 100% by the property owners through the SID, and we have no written protests.
Wonderful. Anyone wishing to be heard on Agenda Item 63, please come forward. So you have a surplus of funds in there?
Yes.
And how many participants in that area?
This one has 34.
Thank you. Okay, hearing, and seeing no one. This also is a public hearing only. So we'll move on to 64 through 87.
Thank you.
Hear that? Thank you very much. And now we are moving on to, we are, this is Mr. Ross Day or afternoon, so do you have plenty of water there? Okay. Reading Item 64 through 87. 64, ZON 62784, a request for rezoning from RE Residence Estate to RD Single Family Residential Restricted. Agenda Item 65, VAR 62756, a request for variance to allow an 874-foot residential block length, with a maximum allowed of 660 feet. Agenda Item 66, to and inclusive of 85. The next 20 items, 66 through 85, are all variance applications, VAR 2765 through VAR 62785, are requests for variances to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 25 feet is required, and a 25-foot rear yard setback where 30 feet is required on lots, 1 through 20, respectively, of a proposed 20-lot single-family residential subdivision. Agenda Item 86, WVR 62786, waiver to allow 177-foot external intersection offset where 220 feet is the minimum distance separation required. And Agenda Item 87, TMP 62787, a request for tentative map for a 20-lot single-family residential subdivision. The applicant is DR Horton, Inc., and the owner is Azure and Torrey Pines 24 LLC on 6.0 acres located at the southeast corner of Azure Drive and Torrey Pines Drive. RE Residence Estates own proposed RD Single Family Residential Restricted. Staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval on Items 64, 65, 86, and 87. On Items 66 through 85, staff recommends denial, and the Planning Commission recommends approval. These are in Ward 6, with Councilman Ross, a public hearing, item which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council, good afternoon. My name is Bob Gronhour, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing DR Horton in this matter. And if, I may, can I give a presentation right now, or do you want to hear from staff?
Thank you. Go ahead with your presentation.
Okay. I'll give you a short, hopefully I could give you a shorter presentation for you reading in all the matters into the record. If I could get your attention to the overhead, we have approximately six acres that is located in the northwest off of Azure and Torrey Pines. This is Azure, this is Torrey Pines. We're asking for 20 homes to be constructed on the property. Previously, there was a previous map that was approved for 21 homes several years ago that expired. This zoning conforms to the land plan. With respect to the models itself, the models are going to be anywhere from 2,400 square feet to 2,700 square feet. The reason that we're asking for the variances on the lots itself is because we're going to be doing a single-story product. We've worked with the neighbors to the south of us, who are in support of our project, because we are doing single-story homes with respect to the project itself instead of two stories. But when you come in with a single-story product, which DR Horton is building it throughout the northwest, when you have the 10,000s here, we do for certain models, we will need some front yard and rear yard setbacks. And because we're asking for 20 lots here, we had to come in, excuse me, with 20 separate variances. So that's the reason for the variances itself. It's the same variance requests for the entire property, but because we have them on individual lots, it's broken up that way. So because of that, that's the reason why you see 20-plus applications there. The Planning Commission did recommend approval for the variances that we're asking for. Staff's recommending approval for the zone change, the tentative map, and the waivers that are before you. I can answer any other questions that you may have, but I want to at least give you a brief history of the reason why we're asking for what we are. And I can answer any other questions that you may have.
Because I'm anxious to learn why there was denial on those particular lots. And of course, it is a public hearing, so we'll hear from the public.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, staff does recommend approval of the rezon from RE to RD. We do recommend approval of the one variance for the extended block length. We recommend approval of the waiver of the 220-foot intersection distance separation, and we recommend approval of the tentative map. However, the 20 variances for reduced front and rear yard setbacks for each proposed lot is not supported because we don't find a hardship associated with the site, which would preclude them from placing smaller homes on, that comply with the setback requirements on those parcels. So that is why we're recommending denial on those 20 variances for each lot.
So is that just more of precedent than what you have had in similar situations? And when you said hardship, I mean, if they were going to have widened sidewalks or something, would that affect your decision?
No, Your Honor. Basically, it's following the code. Staff is typically not going to recommend approval of variances contrary to the code. But of course, council has discretion.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on any one of these agenda items or any one of these lots? Is there a style?
Excuse me?
Is there a style that these homes are going to have? You have pictures.
Yes.
I like pictures. Oh, very attractive. And what is price range at this point?
Yeah, the price range is going to be in the high 300s to high 400s.
And is it a gated community?
No.
And can you go back to your? And can you go back to your, your floor, map plan, please?
Site plan.
Site plan, pardon me. And so how do you get in, just those two ways?
You have access coming in right off of Torrey Pines, and then we have fire access, which is located here. So that's, that's just a crash gate over there, but we have access coming in right off of Torrey Pines.
So the crash gate's only for our fire department?
Yes, yep.
And what is on the west side there, that lot there? What is there? Yeah.
Over here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a vacant lot. We weren't able to purchase that. And then back here are a couple homes that were, some neighbors came to the neighborhood meeting that were in support of us doing single-story homes, and then also in support of actually coming onto the property and building something in the neighborhood. Because we're actually compatible to the zoning that's over here. I believe this is a Lennar project that's an RP, they call it RPD-3, from the zoning category previously in the zoning code for the city of Las Vegas, which we're at similar densities, actually, actually technically we're lower than the density over there, but it's the same, it's similar. There are 8,500 square foot lots, we're minimum 10,000 square foot lots.
Wow. And is there a wall on the south and west?
Yes, yes, we will be building a wall on the south and on the west, yes.
And what is then, or in the north and the east? I mean, that was just.
Yeah, yeah, there, this, this, it will be, we're required to do six-foot highway.
Like stone or something, or?
Yeah, it's decorative block.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone from the public? All right, hearing and seeing no one, I'm going to close this, and, um...
Thank you, Mayor.
Yours.
Here we go. Mr. Gronauer, knowing this neighborhood, you did very well since there's no one here to protest your project.
We've had two neighborhood meetings on this.
Yes, you have. You always go on above and beyond. I must tell everybody that D.R. Horton's product, single-story product, is just, they're doing such a great job with these smaller infill pieces.
They're lovely.
Yeah, they're very, very nice. They take great pride in their constructions, too. So it's a pleasure to work with you and your client, Mr. Gronauer. That being said, Mayor, I am prepared to knock this marathon out.
Okay, go.
I would make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 67.
64.
I'm sorry, 64. Am I starting ahead of myself? Yeah, sorry, I'm on the next page already, 64.
Okay. You have a comment to make, Councilman Beers? No, wow, okay. Here we go, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 64. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries.
We move to approve Agenda Item 65.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 65. Please vote and please post. Motion carries.
Move to approve Agenda Item 66.
Motion on Agenda Item 66 to approve, please vote and please post. Councilman Coffin? Motion carries, 67.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on Agenda Item 67, please vote and please post. Motion carries, 68.
Move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve Agenda Item 68, please vote and please post. Motion carries, 69.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, 69, please vote and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 70.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 70, please vote, please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 71.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 71, please vote and please post. Agenda Item 72, they're carried, by the way, Agenda Item 72.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 72, please vote and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 73.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on 73, please vote and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 74.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on 74, please vote and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 75.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on Agenda Item 75, please vote and please post. Carries, motion on 76, please.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on Agenda Item 76, please vote and please post. Wow, there we go, we're still going, approved on 77.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on 77, please vote and please post. Motion carries, 78.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on 78, please vote and please post. Motion carries on 79.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on 79, please vote and please post. Motion carries on Agenda Item 80.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, I'm on a roll, I won't know where to stop. Please vote and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 81.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve on 81, please vote and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 82.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on Agenda Item 82, please vote and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 83.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve on Agenda Item 83, vote and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 84.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 84. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. Are we still going?
We're still going.
Agenda Item 85.
Move to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve, please vote and please post. Motion carries, Agenda Item 86.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 86, please vote and please post. And Agenda Item that carries, Agenda Item 87.
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve on Agenda Item 87, please vote and please post. Well done, high five.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys have a good day.
And we finish it up because 88 is abayed to the 14th of May, but we're not done. We have a couple of more things. Thank you, Mr. Gronauer, good job. Those are really cute houses. Okay, Agenda Item 89. Does that say 89? Yeah, there it is. RQR 63628, required review, public hearing, applicant Ogden Mart LLC, owner Presario Properties LLC, for possible action or request for required review, the approved review of condition ROC 60336, to delete condition number 2 at 823 East Ogden Avenue, APN 139-34-612-047, C2 General Commercial Zone, Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow. Staff recommends approval. Where, are you there, Councilman Barlow? Okay, and Planning Commission, they also voted, and it's a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to be heard on this plan, or is a, an applicant present? Doesn't feel it's necessary, maybe?
No, I've spoken to him, Mayor.
Oh, okay. Mr. Parago, anything on this beautiful piece?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, this is a six-month required review of a review of condition the council approved that allowed them to sell quartz or single cans, bottles of beer at this location. An incident report from the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department did not contain records of incidents involving alcohol-related disturbances, therefore staff recommends approval.
And how about, are they allowed all that advertising like that? Is that, I know we have a percentage of windows, but maybe that's not a window?
Uh, will be, oh, yes, so we did follow up, and they did come into compliance, because when we did initially go out there and look at this, we did inform them that they were not in compliance, and subsequent follow-up, they did come into compliance.
Thank you very much. It is a public hearing, anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward and state your name. Hearing and seeing none, Councilman, oh, wrong. This is yours, Councilwoman.
No.
Barlow.
Barlow, it's Barlow's, 89.
It is, in fact. Yours.
Yes, ma'am. Moved to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you, there's a motion to approve. Please vote and please post. Oh, yeah, that looks much better. Thank you, the motion carries, thank you, that looks very nice. Can you go back one slide? Could we just look at that again, please? No, the next one that showed it all much better, did you see that was before? And then the next one, there.
Are you having compliance?
That's in compliance?
That's 33%.
I can't really quite make out from the picture. I, I'm not sure that it is, because these pictures were taken before they came into compliance, but we did notice them, we went back out within a week, and they had brought everything into compliance. So I'm, I'm just not sure the pictures were updated.
Okay, thank you, thanks, thanks very much. Okay, we are now up to Agenda Item 48, and that's discussion for possible action regarding fiscal year 2017 tentative budget for the city of Las Vegas and the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency All Wards. So we have the full team approach here.
Yes, oh, yeah. Mayor and members of the council, Betsy Frottwell, City Manager of the City of Las Vegas, I'll just make a couple of introductory remarks and then turn it over to Vanetta Appleyard, our Finance Director, and to Jorge Cervantes, our Executive Director of Community Development.
Thank you very much. I put it in my phone, so now every time I look you up, and, and don't, please don't change his title anymore.
Okay, maybe, you know, July's rolling around soon, sometimes it is.
It just gets itchy, okay.
You've got to keep it fresh, right? Okay, so today is the day where we're having our budget workshop. The information that we'll present today, based on your approval, will be submitted with, as the tentative budget with the state in a couple of weeks to meet that deadline, and then will be utilized to formulate the final budget that will be presented to you on May 18th. As you know, we go through a very rigorous process in requesting projects and enhancements, as well as adjustments to base budgets. In this budget, we did request a 2% decrement budget from every department to try and address the flattening out of our revenue sources, as well as the underperformance to budget of sales tax this year. Vanetta's going to go through all of those mechanics in her presentation today, and we'll talk about the outcome of that effort. But it's, it's a very thorough process where we talk about demands, we take a look at what the citizen survey said, what your strategic direction has been in the strategic plan, as well as the things that we've become accustomed to as far as service levels, to try and sustain those. So we kept all of that in mind as we developed this draft budget that's prepared for you today, and we stand ready to answer any questions that you might have. And Mayor, I'd like to just reserve an opportunity to make some closing comments at the end of the presentation, if you don't mind.
Please, we would welcome you back.
Vanetta Appleyard, Director of Finance. And as Betsy mentioned, we have before you our tentative budget and looking for any kind of direction that you have as we file that budget. What we wanted to show you that is across all funds, we will be filing a budget of 1.2 billion. That includes our special revenue funds, enterprise funds, internal service funds, and the capital funds. We always show, we always have to report our population as well. The general fund, we're looking at FY16 estimate of 512 million, and we're filing a budget of 535 million in '17. And the capital program, this is the capital program just for the annual number that we'll be presenting, and that's 388 in FY16 and 350 in FY17. As we start the process of the budget, we always like to revisit FY16. We like to tell you how our performance has been. It helps us formulate our decisions as we go forward with FY17. We know that in our revenue area, we were down 4.9 million. That number was, as Betsy mentioned, our C-tax did not perform the way we had anticipated it to. So we had budgeted 5.5%, and it came in at 4%. So that was about a 2.6 million decline in C-tax. We also know, we also saw a reduction in our jail bed rental as a result of Clark County going to their own jail facility. We also had some court fines, were not trending as positively as we had anticipated in the budget. Permits were a little trending slower as well, and some of our franchise fees, particularly our utility franchise fees, had gone down as well from what we were trending. And on the expenditure side, though, we did, we underran our expenditures by 9.4 million. 3.5 of that was in the vacancy factor that we have. We, all of our positions don't always get hired at the same time, so that helped us there. We also had a non-labor savings of $3 million, and that's just not being, the spending that we do, the departments, they recognized that we needed to curb as we saw our revenues go down, so they responded very positively to that. And in addition, we had 2.5 million in savings from our debt service because of the refunding that we did on the city hall bonds. So although we projected a budget growth of 6.4%, our actuals came in, or we're estimating them to come in at the 4.3%. Our labor did grow at 5.5%, and in that labor, budgeted labor, we did add 62.5 positions. And with that, at the end, we always do our balancing of our excess beginning fund balance. When we did that with FY15, we know that in FY17, we started off with 9.1 million dollars in excess. What we did as we looked at the submittals with the expanded request, we determined which one of those, which one of those items could be used with that money. So it's one-time money with one-time expenses. And with that, we determined that there was 5.4 million dollars that we would utilize out of our fund balance to help us with our FY17 efforts. And that included 1.5 in our, 1.5 million for elections. We also know that we have the life-saving program for the No Kill and the Animal Foundation of 500,000. We wanted to also do the equipment that was needed in public safety area for detention, as well as for equipment and ongoing vehicles for public safety, so that would be D and E and Fire, and that accounted for the balance of what we were doing. And I apologize, there was 2 million that we will put into the Employee Benefits Internal Service Fund, that's to help us with the increase in our health benefit costs. So the fiscal trends that we find, that in FY16, we will finish the year, or we're projecting to finish the year, and it'll be our fourth year in the black. So our revenues will be in excess of our expenditures because of that 9.4 million that we talked about on the previous slide. One of the things we saw that C-tax was slowing down, we had, we know that if we had seen FY6 was our highest year of C-tax growth, and in FY17, it, the growth that we're seeing is only 5.9%. So the difference between FY06 and FY17, we've only seen a growth in C-tax of 5.9%. In property tax, our highest year was FY09. We wanted to point out that the trend is, our growth for FY17, that'll be a negative 28.5%. So our property tax is not growing at the level as we had seen in FY09. As Betsy mentioned, we did ask all the departments to do a 2% decrement. That provided us $6 million to help, they reduced our budget levels by $6 million. We did have expanded requests, and those expanded requests were in the priority areas, so we wanted to make sure that we could continue our, our service levels. And in filing that, the budget, we believe will be at a $3.1 million deficit. This other, this other graph, it's a little busy, but what we wanted to emphasize here with those trends that we saw, we compared FY08 to FY07. And you can see property tax, we had 127 million in property tax in '08, and now because of the tax caps, we're looking at 96 million. That's a 24% decline in property tax.
Okay, so you're talking '08 against '17, not against '07?
Right, oh, we would, we just picked a, we picked a point in time to just compare all of our trends, and so that was, we picked '08 as the one in the middle. C-tax was higher in one year, property tax was higher in another year. We just thought FY08 was a good, a good comparison here.
Yes, and Councilman Beers, please?
Thanks. Trying to evaluate the degree to which a loss of property value is culpable versus the tax cap. To be clear, the tax cap caps increases in property tax.
Yes, yes.
So, so the drop here is not as much due to a capped, a cap on increases as it is decreases in property bill, property tax bills, because the underlying value hasn't decreased?
Well, I might, let me just jump in for a second. There's, there's two different things that are going on. One, we had a dramatic drop in value, yes. Both, two different things contributing to that, obviously. Both, two different things contributing to that, obviously, the, the values themselves from the recession. And secondarily, the request for relief through the Board of Equalization, so the appeals process. Two things drop it down. That typically happened in oh eight, oh nine. We've kind of seen a change in the trend. The assessed value is actually trending up pretty significantly. However, the caps are now in play. So the initial drop may have been due to the appeals and to the, the valuation of the land based on the recession, but its ability to recover has been substantially muted, muted as a result of that.
Because of the cap of twice inflation.
Because of the cap. So you've got two things going on, the initial drop, which was market-related, and that, but the grow back has been severely
constrained.
constrained as a result of the caps. And so that's kind of what you're seeing here. In fact, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have thirty million dollars worth of abatements this year? Cumulative that we've?
No, I think, I think we're forecasting seventeen something north of twenty million.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Twenty-five million in abatements.
And is that cumulative from when the tax cap was initially implemented?
No, that is not a cumulative abatement.
That's this year.
That's one year?
That is the amount of taxes that are being abated as a result of the application of this year's tax cap. So when you, when you, I don't know that anyone other than someone like me would look at your tax bill, but your tax bill actually shows your tax amount in the first column. Then there's an, that's actually your tax bill. Then there's the abatement piece, which applies the cap, whatever the cap is for that property for that year. And then the next tax, net tax bill, the third column is what you pay. That is a, that is the tax cap for that year. I also want to just maybe amplify something that Betsy said, which was entirely accurate, but when you look at that hundred and twenty-seven thousand, a hundred and twenty-seven million dollar, two thousand and eight property tax revenue, that's revenue, net of the cap. The caps were applied in oh five, and they did exactly what they were supposed to do as the runaway land values and appreciation happened in six, seven, and eight. And so that is not the full tax bill. That is an already abated tax value. Now, yes, values dropped all through the recession, but as we know, the last few years, they are recovering. And those values are coming back, but the revenue can't come back because there was no cap on the way down. There is a cap on the way back up. So there's, there, as we said before, and we said practically every, it'll take over two decades for us to achieve that hundred and twenty-seven million dollar revenue level into the future. It's going to be a
Assuming that inflation drops to point one percent.
That would be even assuming inflation is over three percent.
Okay. So at that point, if inflation is over three percent, the cap, the worst-case scenario cap in the city is twice inflation.
Well, but for residential, it's three. And residential is over eighty percent of our property value. So the math tells me that it's going to take
The default.
It'll take two decades at a three percent residential cap and an eight percent commercial cap. Based, based on that, it would take two decades.
Does there exist
From two thousand and eight.
A cumulative measure from when the cap was put in place by the legislature to date that would be updated once a year?
We, 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 you had, you approved an item today on the agenda for contract with a plat analysis, right? And, and we are sharing that contract, by the way, with all, with the other nine largest agencies in the state, local government agencies. He has that data, we have tracked that data. It is, and it is for the state, it's, it's in the billions of dollars cumulatively. It's a significant amount of money.
But it would have gone negative in nine, ten, and eleven?
In terms of, in terms, no, this is in terms of
In terms of the value of the total abatement. If your property value is dropping, there's no cap. Your property tax drops because the value
Yeah, but there always was, there always was some, every year, the lowest the abatement for, for the city ever got was like, I think, less than a million dollars. So we never had a year where we didn't have some abatement, even at, even during the recession.
Even during the worst years.
Yep.
I think it's kind of, for, for the layman that may be watching, if the cap stayed in place, but had had a threshold that allowed the property tax revenue to grow back at the natural market-supported level since the recession, that ninety-six million dollars this year would be closer to a hundred and twenty million dollars this year. That's the net impact. And so, you know, this is a significant issue. I've been city manager for seven and a half years now, and when we were initially doing our research on this, and Mark may chime in, but at the peak of the recession, when we were responding in, for the city, because we lagged, the private sector economy on that, nine, ten, eleven, we were asked to estimate when we thought the property tax would recover. And at that point, we were estimating it would take at least thirteen years. Now, seven years later almost, six years later, we're now saying it's going to take another twenty years. So it's not getting better, and it's not really recovering. And so this is a significant issue for us as a city because this is our most stable form of revenue that we have, the most stable form of revenue that we have. And so I think it's really important that we have a very inclusive conversation with the community about what that means for governmental services going forward.
And if I may, Betsy brought up the general public. I just, it may be helpful to share that there is a misconception that these caps and other factors reset on transfer or sale of property. That is not the case. These flow with the property. These, these caps are in perpetuity as property's transferred. And so that's the other aspect, I think, that people don't realize, and that's part of the reason why all the governments in Nevada that rely on property tax are really suffering in fiscal year seventeen and perhaps beyond if, as you point out, the CPI index doesn't get north of one and a half percent.
Okay, I think that's happy news. Let's continue.
And again, the top part shows the revenue. We were just trying to show you the demands for services during that same period of time. And as you can see, we've had a tremendous increase in our demands for services that bodes that the revenue's not keeping up with those demands. As we started our focus, as Betsy mentioned, we always look for the council priorities. We look at our citizen surveys, our park surveys, and our employment engagement. As we plan, we want our focus to always be there to ensure that your priorities are met and that our citizens' needs are being addressed. So that kind of sets the stage for us as we start. With that, in the general fund expanded, I mean, in the expanded requests, we have some positions that we'll be adding, recommending to add. There's forty-three point five in the general fund. Two point, two point five of those are for parks and rec because of the increase in track break as they're going back to the twelve-month school, we'll be seeing more track break. The code enforcement with the franchise agreement, the new franchise agreement, they've agreed to pay for three code enforcement officers. So this is a revenue neutral. We will be seeing some revenue from this to offset these costs. And this contract has not been signed, so until it is signed, these positions won't be filled. And then the admin service support, this is to support your council activities that we've talked about. And we have six marshals that we are recommending for Fremont Street Patrol.
Thank you.
This is a revenue-neutral item as well because the RDA will be giving us funds to pay for this program. We have sixteen corrections officers planned, and we have six fire intermediate life support unit. This is a ten-hour shift that's going to help with the overtime issues and the, the continuous run. The ten hours has to be approved in the collective bargaining unit agreement that has to be reached. So these positions will not be filled until it's contingent upon that collective bargaining agreement. We're also planning on putting a rescue at Fire Station one oh three, so that this plan takes into consideration that. And a fire inspector is being hired as well. And we have two support services. That's in the area for, of security for the loading dock that, for city hall that was recommended in our review, as well as an administrative assistant for the fire support operation. And in the other funds, the enterprise funds, the internal service funds, again, these are funds that are self-supporting. They have their own revenue source, so the expenses are always judged based on those revenue sources. So in the enterprise fund sanitation, it is adding someone to the storm, sewer and storm drain services, we have, and the sanitation support area. We have building and safety, the process review coordinator that is needed out there at the DSC, as well as three building and safety combo inspectors and train, and trainees. So there's a retirement happening there, so Chris is making sure that he's got a trainee that's going to be able to step in and be able to keep that going. We have four parking enforcement officers that are being hired to help patrol in the parking area, and three parking support services. That's the additional admin staff as well as a mechanic, a meter mechanic. On the internal service fund side, we have five, six fire communication techs that are being hired. These, again, we have to wait until the other entities approve these there. We share this, this cost with the other entities. So once that's approved in their budgets, then we'll know whether or not this will move forward.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a question, please? Just backing up, you're going to add four more parking officers and three parking support services? And we've really sort of, as far as parking, reduced where we have no parking, our meters are. I know we've cut back on some of them. We do not have meters some places that are working because we don't use it anymore.
I, I believe these parking enforcement officers are also to be patrols, like in the neighborhoods, where she's, Brandy is needing some more support in that area. So I think these officers are going to be redeployed all over the city limits, not just for meters.
So it's even where you may not have parking meters, it's where you might have people parking where they shouldn't be parking?
Correct. Yes. So with the economic development, we, they're requesting for a financial person to help them with their new market tax credit efforts, as well as some of their other financial efforts in evaluating all of the, the plans that are coming to them. And we have two engineers in the SID area. As we, as development is picking up, we are seeing a lot of SID requests coming in, and so that support is needed there as well. This graph just gives you an idea, even to show where our full-time employment has been. The blue line, the blue bar represents non-public safety. The red bar represents public safety. So we tried to show you the trend, where we were in FY oh eight and where we are now. And FY seventeen includes those new positions that we just talked about. So when you look at that, the non-public safety employment full-time is still below, twenty percent below where we were in FY oh eight. And on the public safety side, it is five percent higher than where we were, but that's very minimal when you consider, I mean, it, it, the trend that we have with the fire stations that were opened during this period of time. This graph just takes that bar, the public safety bar that we always show you. Public safety being not only fire and detention and enforcement, but also public works, traffic, TFO, and all of that. So in the general fund, when we were going through the economic downturn, you can see that the percentage was around fifty percent of our budget was devoted to public safety. So as we've had to go through this economic downturn, you can see that the public safety has continued to rise as a percent of our total budget because that has always been a priority. So we were trying to show you that, that this trend.
I think it's really important that we keep a very close eye on this trend because it means that we're becoming a public safety-only agency. That's what this graph shows you.
Public safety what?
Only.
Only public safety agency.
Yeah. Well, you can see, pre-recession, we were fifty percent
Yep.
public safety and other. Now we're at nearly seventy percent. So it's a significant issue for many, many local governments going forward. This is a trend we need to keep a very close eye on.
Mayor, if I may?
I don't think you have a choice, sorry. Mayor Rowland, yes?
Vanetta, maybe, maybe you explain it, I wasn't paying attention, and I apologize. But from oh seven to oh eight, why is that such a huge increase or?
Because as we were having to cut our budgets, we, we kept on cutting our overall budget. So like in FY oh seven, our budget was four hundred and sixty-nine million. We, we went down in our total budget. And so public safety became a bigger piece of the total budget.
We also laid off everybody, we laid off in the non-public safety areas and we didn't lay off in the public safety areas. So you had two different things going on. You had the big number of the budget number going down because we lost twenty percent of our revenue. And at the same time, we held public safety kind of harmless or flat, five percent growth, right?
Because we focused our priority on that.
On, on those other things, yeah.
Then let me ask you this, Vanetta, in seventeen's budget, I'm sure we are taking into consideration collective bargaining agreements as well and kind of getting a ballpark. Am I correct?
We have the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Vanetta.
No, that was it. I was going to say, we have PPA, the POA, and our CEA unit in these numbers, but we have not reached an agreement with IAFF, so those numbers are not in here because we don't typically do that in our budgeting process.
Understand, moving target. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Please continue.
So as we look to our FY seventeen expenditure assumptions, we looked at our growth in our expenditures. We compared, when you compare FY sixteen, the budget, we're projecting a two point seven estimate, sorry, budget, from a budget to budget, I'm sorry. Our FY sixteen budget to our FY seventeen budget, it's a two point seven percent increase. But when you look at our actuals, as you know, because we did under, I mean, we did underrun a lot of our expenses, if you look at the actual of FY sixteen estimate to our estimated budget, it's a four point six percent increase. And, and in the area, we wanted to sustain programs and, and expand in our priority areas. And again, that's to keep pace with what we believe is the service demands. So that's the only place where we expanded. And here's where we did, let you know that we did include the contractual obligations that have been agreed to with PPA, POA, and the LVCEA contract that you saw today. We do always put a three percent vacancy in for the larger departments. That's D and E, fire, public works, O and M, and parks and rec. And the metro funding increase that we are showing in this budget is two percent over where we were for FY sixteen. But this is primarily due to the one-time funding that metro is giving us through their fund balance. So that's one-time money for this ongoing expanded. So it's something that we'll have to continue to watch. We talked to metro, and they told us that next year, because they will not necessarily be able to give us any fund balance contribution, we could expect our contribution to go up ten million dollars for FY eighteen. So it's definitely something we want to watch. So we added six, sixty-five positions, six, and forty-three were in the general fund, twenty-two in the other funds.
I'm so sorry, I don't under, what's, you added sixty-five point five?
Sixty-five point five was what we're estimating in FY seventeen. Remember these previous pages? When we talked about those positions? I just wanted to recap our assumptions. And forty-three point five are in the general fund, twenty-two are in those other funds. And in the public safety area, we're adding thirty-seven. And in the non-public safety, it's twenty-eight point five.
It is what it is. You can't do anything if you're not safe. There's nothing.
So when we, so our total expenditures are the five thirty-four point nine, and we wanted to show you the pieces of the pie. It always is a nice to see a picture, that fifty-four point four percent of our expenditures are salary and benefits.
Can I ask a question there? Can you ever break out, is it forty percent or forty-two point two percent that's PERS? Is that included in that purple area?
The purple area does include the PERS as well.
So if you broke out the PERS portion, it would be forty-two percent of that off of it, correct?
You know, I'm not really sure at this point. I probably would have to do, I'm one of those people that has to do the calculations.
Okay.
Mayor, the, the current, it would be much less than that. The current contribution rate for regular, which is most of our employees, is twenty-eight percent. The early retirees, which for us is D and E, the marshals, corrections officers, and, and, and fire personnel, is forty percent. But that's only on eligible compensation. Not all compensation's eligible. And so it would be, I would expect it to be probably closer to, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent in term, in terms of the benefit factor
Thank you.
in aggregate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Of that amount, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, the budget that we carry for them represents 26%. And our non-labor category is that 16.1%. We also like to show you this, our expenditures. This one is done by our functions. So our public safety function is number one at 66.9%. And number two is the general government, which goes down to 11.8%. Our third one is cultural at 8.7%. And judicial is in fourth place at 5.1%. On the revenue assumption side, what we did was, we are showing an overall increase of 2.8%. This is a C-tax growth of 6%. What we do, or sorry, 3%. As we, as we started this budget process, we met with our financial oversight committee. Those are the people that are citizens that are comprised of various positions throughout the community. We have someone from Howard Hughes Corporation on there, El Cortez, Applied Analysis. We try to, and other financial institutions so that we get a well-rounded group of people. They come in and give us guidance and tell us how they see our budget and our revenue and from their perspective. So it's always a very valuable experience for us. With that, they recommended a 3% tax growth, 3% C-tax growth. So they were the first ones that kind of recognized that we were, our C-tax wasn't coming in at the 5.5 that we had projected. So the 3%, the 3% is also pretty consistent with what the state has given us as guidance as well at this point in time. The property tax increase, we're looking at 1.5%. That is not, it's a little bit above the cap because we know we're going to have some new, new construction or some annexations. So that is trending about where we plan to be. This is where we had assessed value increase of 6.8% in our property. The abatement is now at $25.2 million. And we looked at our tax, and the tax caps as we've been talking about residential and non-residential as sitting at 0.2%. We're looking at license and franchise to increase at about a 0.8%. This is mostly due to the utility franchises, we're seeing a decline in those numbers. So we're taking that into consideration, even though we're seeing a pretty good trend in our business licensing. So we had to temper that. Our fines and charges for services, we're having that at a 2% growth rate. And we're anticipating that some of the decline that we've seen in the court fines will start turning around with the addition of the Metro officers. We also this year are planning a contribution from the redevelopment agency. They're going to be providing $1.7 million to us. This is for that Fremont Street experience that we talked about. We also, they're going to also be doing some sidewalk and, sidewalk and maintenance as well in the redevelopment area. And they're going to be providing costs for the encampment cleanup that O&M has to do, as well as graffiti abatement that they're doing. And we also have the downtown ranger program that they will be funding because it all directly relates to the RDA area. We also took a real hard look at our internal service funds to see if there was any funding in there that we could bring back into the general fund. And with that, we identified a million dollars in the computer internal service fund that we'll also be bringing back to help us with our revenue side. With that being said, we'll have $531.7 million in general fund revenues. You can see consolidated taxes, 52.7% of that. And property tax is the 18.1%. When you add those two together, that's like, that's 70%. That's 70% that is really dictated to us by the legislature. And we have very, you know, we have to wait and go through legislative session to make changes to those items. License and franchise and other revenue, those are the ones we have a little bit more control over because that's where we have our fees for services and our fines. So we just wanted to point that out as well. So the number part of this looks, as we see, that the revenues will be the 531.7. And you can see on the wages and benefit line, that also shows all of our collective bargaining agreements going forward. The non-labor category allows us to have that expanded that we brought up. And the Metropolitan Police Department, there's that 2% growth as well. And the debt service contribution that we need to make to fund the debt service that we have in the general, for the general fund and the golf course enterprise. So with that, we will be filing a deficit of 3.1 million. On the FY '16 column, you can see the 9.1, the one-time transfers out. Again, remember, 5.4 of that is being used for one-time money that we plan on using in FY '17 for expanded. And the balance will be going to capital projects that Jorge will be talking about.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes, Your Honor.
Could you repeat again for me? When we say we transferred out the 19.3, where did it come from?
The 19.3, we did that already.
I know that, yeah.
And that was excess beginning fund balance that we had when we started '15. And we also had some additional revenue. So the two of those things helped us to do one-time money when we started our FY '16.
Where are we getting the 9.1? Some from the RDA?
No, the 9.1 again is excess beginning fund balance. So it's money that we carried over from, that's money that we carried over.
I got you.
Again, it's accounting mathematics that we do.
I, I got you.
And we will be bringing that to you in our augmentation that we do at the end of the year. So you'll see that number again. Because we have to increase our budget for that. And this chart, what we try to do here is just kind of show you the trend again from FY '08 to FY '17. The red being the expenses while the green is being the revenue side. And again, we can see that when we're above it, we're in the, we have our revenues in excess. And when we're in, and you can see in '17 where we are just barely making, in the red, that represents that 3.1 deficit that we will be filing. I kind of always like to look at this because it does show how we responded. When our revenues went down, we really did respond by cutting our expenses. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Jorge.
For the record, Jorge Sarvantes, in putting together your capital program.
Your Honor, may I? I'm sorry. Just as a, I wanted to add something to the end of Vanetta's presentation on operating. And I do want to, I want to not rephrase, but I want to repeat what I can about the caution from our city manager because she said, you know, we're in danger of becoming a public safety agency only. Remember, that is, that's not why any of us got into government. Public safety is always expected to be the number one hot button issue with people. It is the thing that always is guarantee of a safe election. You've increased public safety and you don't say in your campaign, we cut parks, we cut cultural affairs, we cut programs for children. But in essence, that's what you do. Because if you remove the employees who provide those services, you are removing the services. And being public safety is critical. We obviously, you know, know how important that is. But we have to stand up and say sometimes, folks, and I'm speaking to the public here, you can't just expect public safety to be the only thing we care about because everything we do, really, everything we do relates to public safety. And I've often wondered why we continue to stick with that same old paradigm about saying public safety and everything else. But really, it's all public safety. You take the parks, which keep people busy of all ages, but provide a venue for children to act up and act out and have a good time safely. After-school programs, all these things that we provide have shrunk and shrunk and shrunk in our budget. And this is nothing to be proud of. So I feel like while we've expanded public safety, it's at the expense of everything else. And you know, whether it's a shortage of taxes caused by our antiquated taxation system here and the inability of local governments to, to be able to raise funds, to pay their bills and to fulfill their responsibilities, I don't know. But I just want you to know that I feel very, very inhibited if I think only of public safety and everything else. Because I think every piece of our budget is public safety-related, all our community services, everything. Our centers for old and young. But if you take care of the kids and you keep them busy, you're helping public safety. Is there anybody that can deny that, that that doesn't help keep a kid off the street and maybe keep him from doing graffiti, violence and anything like that? So again, I appreciate you letting me get in my, saw my soapbox here, Vanetta, and interrupting you because it's very important that we put that in perspective. That graph, and it might have been on page 10 in the narrative, showing public safety becoming 75% of our budget is something very scary. It is not responsible. It really isn't. All the men and women in uniform know what I'm talking about. Because they understand that if you intercept these problems before they become the uniforms problems, it becomes a safety issue. So I thank you very much. Okay, proceed.
Please continue.
In putting together a capital program, we use a variety of multiple funding sources. And some of these funding sources carry restrictions. For example, your community development block grant money can only be used in eligible areas. The Ad Palorum tax that we get can only be used to improve city facilities. The 1% room tax can only be used for transportation. But we combine all these funding sources and try to get a program for you based on your priorities. We also look at reallocating funds from projects as we close them out, the excess money. Or at the start of the calendar year, we look back at those projects that we funded previously that maybe haven't moved forward and reevaluate the priority, see if they still need to move forward or reprogram that money. So that's how we put together your program. That's part of the funding. The other thing I want to point out is in this next year, fiscal year '17, in addition to the new projects that we're bringing forward, we're also going to be working on those projects that you approved last year. If you recall, last year you approved a $50 million bond toward recreational programs. Because of our capacity to get the projects out, we only did one bond for half of that. This year we'll be doing the second bond and finish the second half of the list. And we've got the list of projects a little bit later in the presentation we'll show you. And then we're going to be working on some parking projects that you authorized some last year and some that are in this year's budget, including the one that would be funded with the Transportation Improvement District in Symphony Park. And then looking for opportunities for some parking facilities downtown, whether it's in the medical district, whether it's in the Fremont East, wherever the demand is there to help spur some of the economic development. When we look at our five-year capital program, we fund over five years. Our program from 2016 to 2020 actually has $975 million worth of projects that are either in the planning phase, the design phase, the construction phase. So it's a pretty large program. And so we look at it based on the year-to-year. Earlier, Vanetta mentioned that this year it's about $350 million. That's about the amount of work we do in one year. But over the five-year plan, it's a much larger program. This year, we're allocating $66 million of new projects out of those various funding sources that we talked about. This doesn't include, however, those funding allocations that other regional agencies approve and allocate. For example, the Regional Transportation Commission provides us money for our roadway system, the Regional Flood Control District for drainage type. That's not included in the 66, so that's in addition to that money. When we look at that 66 million dollars that you're all allocating today, we broke it off into major categories. 35 million of that's going toward parking garages, again, the TID parking garage, a couple of parking garages downtown. Public safety's getting about 6.3 million. That's to replace fire trucks, to replace equipment now for DNE, to buy traffic control equipment. City facilities, again, 5.3, that's to repair some of the facilities where we've got to replace the mechanical system, when we need to fix leaky roofs, things of that nature. And then 4.8 is going toward technology. And of that, that also includes the last allocation toward what we're doing at the DSC to automate that process, to make it easier and better for our development community. And then 3.6 is the neighborhood recreational facilities. These are the revenues, the residential construction tax that gets collected whenever development occurs and goes toward doing some of the neighborhood parks that you all identify. And then 3.5 toward road and flood. The actual request from all the departments for this year was $323 million. And we were only able to meet about 20% of that demand with the 66 million available. So as you can see, there's always a greater demand than money available. Just wanted to give you an idea of the amount of requests that comes from the various departments. Some of the significant capital projects that we weren't able to fund this year, we were hoping to put some money aside for some strategic land acquisition, whether it's buying land up in the northwest to help with a new business park, whether it's sending money aside to help out the medical district with some opportunities there, some land downtown. We also didn't fund Symphony Park infrastructure. The idea there is right now that the demand isn't there because the buildings aren't there. The infrastructure's in place to support what's there today. But as development starts to occur there, we need to keep in mind, we still have roads and some drainage improvements that need to be addressed there. There were some requests for expansion and rehabilitation of recreational facilities. In addition to what we're doing with the $50 million bond, there's other facilities that still need to be upgraded. And so those weren't funded. And then the reconstruction of Fire Station 3. Last year, we funded the design event, design is underway. We don't expect design to be done until next spring. So we thought we could push that out to next fiscal year and fund the construction that year. So all these items will be considered next year as we see what money's available during that fiscal process and try to fund some of these projects.
Could I ask a question? Are you going to be able to have any money at all for strategic acquisitions? Or is this just part of them that we can't get, or it's all, we can't get any?
Last year, Councilman, last year and the year before, there was some money set aside. So there is some money that's existing today. And there has been some acquisitions that have been done. And there is still a little bit of balance there. We're just hoping to put more money in there. So if opportunities come up, we'd be able to react to them pretty quick. Just to recap again, the list of projects that we'll be working on this year on the recreational side. Again, this year we did a bunch of, more of the community facilities type, some of our community centers. Next year we'll be concentrating more on park-type facilities. And so as we roll out to construction, the ones that we started designing last year, these are the ones we'll be starting up in the summer and get ready for construction of the following year. And then every year when we present the capital project, we also like to give an update of where we are with the status of our current assets. We have over $6 billion in infrastructure that's invested and we need to maintain it. I did want to call your attention to the arterial roadway program. Because you'll see that this year we have an $8 million deficit there. The reason for that is, the way we were funding this program was through the fuel revenue indexing. That program was approved in 2014. It was funded for three years, so it carries three years to expire it this year. And so we're hopeful that come November, when the Volco South checks in that program, it gets approved. And that will shore up that program there if it does. If not, then we're going to have to start looking at our motor vehicle fuel tax and decide whether we build new capacity as the city continues to grow or whether we reallocate that money to maintain what we have. The other thing I want to call your attention to is the sidewalks, the third road down. As you can see, we've got it funded for this year. And the way we did that is, we actually grabbed $2.1 million of community development block grant to be able to do some infill sidewalk on the areas south of Charleston, the downtown area. And then O&M has kind of recreated the way they do some of their allocation of internal resources, where they're now going to be able to mobilize some of their internal folks to address some of the sidewalk issues, some of the ages. So because of that move, we're able to allocate it this year and take care of it. It may be more of a challenge going forward the following years. And the final item I want to call your attention to is the very last item right below buildings. We add a new line under called ADA upgrades. Last year when we started the strategic analyst program, one of our analysts did an analysis of all our city facilities to identify where we need to do some ADA upgrades where they were. We had restrooms that needed some upgrades, water fountains that weren't high enough. And they identified about $10 million worth of improvements we've got to do. The plan is to do that over 10 years, allocate about a million dollars a year. This year we're actually allocating $2 million because of all the improvements that we're doing to all the community centers that are part of the bonded projects are going to address a lot of ADA issues there. But going forward, again, that's another asset that we need to combine on how to fund that improvement.
In addition to the city budget, we'll also be filing a budget for the redevelopment agency. So we wanted to go over that with you as well. One of the things we wanted to know that.
Your Honor?
Yes, please, Councilman.
If I could interrupt again, thank you. Sorry, Vanetta.
Sorry.
Thank you. I just, I just want to ask something here. I noticed the red numbers for what we consider to be operating in deficit in terms of our available money versus what we really need for replacement and/or rehabilitation. I, I kind of think these are a little low. You know, in previous years, they've been quite a bit larger. This is only about 10 million here in deficit. Now, 10 million's a lot of money and we're falling behind. And if you compound that, of course, it gets bigger every year. But in a couple of cases, I think we have extended the life cycle of some of our assets. Or you take the very top assets, your arterials and local streets. The life cycle, I'm not quite sure how to describe that. Is that a life cycle based upon date of construction, in other words, replacement? And with annual or every five years resurfacing or, what do you call it, not regrooving and paving?
Repaving.
Yeah, okay. But that, including that, they still expire their life at 40 years, 50 years?
Typically, that's the life cycle of pavement when you put pavement down. Normally about every 20 years, we've got to come back and we've got to mill it and overlay it. We can do that up to two times. So typically about 40 years, they start deteriorating to the point where it requires a reconstruction. And so as long as we keep investing money and maintaining it, we can extend that life cycle. And so 40 years is typical on the road. Now, the reality is, we have some roads out there, probably been there 60, 70 years. And some of them are in pretty, still in pretty good shape, some are falling apart. So it's a matter of how much effort we put to make sure we don't let it reach that critical point of deterioration where it doesn't even reach the 40 years. So the more we can take care of it. So the more we can take care of it through milling and overlays to seal cracks so water doesn't penetrate and create deterioration underneath, the more we can extend that life cycle.
Well, we have some roads that look pretty bad, and I cannot tell if they are in schedule for, you know, rehab, or, you know, just even just crack and seal. But it looks to me like that we're a little optimistic on the life cycle of these things because our weather, it's off the charts as far as what would be, you know, an ideal kind of life cycle for roads. It's just so darned hot here, so much UV. Everything, even the last bit of oil just evaporates out somehow of the asphalt. So, I think it's more than this. I worry about it because I'd rather not have us understate the life cycle and then essentially understate our deficit here. Because if you say something's going to go 40, but really, they're 30 on the average, or 33 or 34 years on the average, then our deficit is more. And so, I know in a couple of circumstances, we've decided to extend our life cycle or our rehab schedule.
We did on the slurry seal program. The slurry seal, we used to do it at the residential streets every seven years. After being analyzed, we saw that taking it 10 years wouldn't impact it, yet it would allow us to reprogram it. What I mentioned earlier, some of the work that Jerry's done to try to address the sidewalk issue, that's the way he did it, by extending the life cycle on the slurry seal on the residential side. He found that it didn't have a detrimental impact, yet he could reallocate some of that funding and to address a lot of the sidewalk issues that we have.
Uh-huh. Well, I thank you, and I just want to say I'll continue to watch this because it's always been something I felt we didn't adequately budget for or didn't portray to our voters out there, how much money we really need to keep our roads up, and that every time you lay down a stripe, piece of paint, or whatever you do, it starts to age. And, you know, that's small potatoes we're putting on an aging schedule, but in essence, it's going away the second you lay it down. Or it's getting discolored, must be cleaned. So there's all sorts of stuff that goes on, and I just, I worry about that. So I just hope to get greater detail, not to get granular today, just that I want to see more of it in that kind of form. Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue.
We wanted to present the redevelopment agency with that. Right now, the assessed value in the redevelopment agency in FY16, it increased 9.3%. We also saw in FY17, it's increased by 10.6%. The revenue in FY16 was up 11.1% from the previous year, and in FY17, we're projecting the revenue to be at 7.1% up from our estimate for FY16. We know, and the number of appeals are declining, so all of that is helping with the revenue side on the redevelopment agency. There's over 180 million in new projects under construction in that area, which includes the Federal Justice Tower, the Supreme Court Building, the Lucky Dragon, and the Eclipse Theater. So all of those, when they come online, will benefit the redevelopment area. We also, this morning, refinanced the existing debt provided, and it provided for reduced interest rates upfront, which is giving us that additional cash flow over the next, until 2030. And the Smith Center will begin paying back their $20 million note to the RDA. We also received, wanted to recap that, in FY15, we got a bond rating increase, and we just recently received another bond rating increase in FY16.
Excuse me, could I ask another question? When you say RDA funds, are you talking about RDA 1 and 2 together?
Yes, this represents RDA 1 and RDA 2. So there, what we will be filing for them is a budget of tax increment revenue of 16.1 million. We have to set aside, then we'll be taking off. The other contributions that are coming in is, again, the Fifth Street School note payment. We have City Parkway 5 is repaying the money that it had been borrowed from. Fremont Street is also still providing $700,000 in rental revenue, and the Smith Center will make a $1.5 million payment on the note that they owe to the RDA. So that, and then on the operations side, the increase that you see there is more of a projected increase. A lot of times, what we see happening in operations for program expansion, so with that extra revenue, we will be able to do a little bit more on the program side. The debt service going from 10.2 to 4.8 is a direct result of the refinancing that we did this morning. We will, the tax increment financing is ongoing as we have to repay those, and the contribution to the city of Las Vegas, the 1.7 million that we talked about on our city side, and then other expense programs of 1.8. With that, they will be, have an excess of 4.3 million, and they will have a ending fund balance of 25.6 million. So our key budget takeaways, we wanted to recap that growth of our major revenue sources has slowed. We know that C-Tax at 3% is down considerably over when we reported to you. We had 48 separate months of 5.9 average increase. We know that the property tax cap of 0.2% is definitely causing our commercial and residential property tax rates not to be able to go up. We did provide for modest expanded requests in our areas of public safety, the youth development and community services. We considered those to be priority areas that we needed to do and service levels we needed to maintain. We will be filing a $3.1 million deficit with this tentative budget. We hope that as we work through final, we might be able to improve that number, but that's where we're going to approach it for FY, for the tentative, and we want to continue seeking prudent cost reductions. We know that we have to keep reexamining ourselves and looking at where we can do more in that area. And I think with that, Betsy wanted some closing remarks.
I don't know, Mayor and Council, if you have any questions. I can keep it pretty brief, but...
There's a, I hear a yes all the way to my right.
Well, the Mayor and I were just looking at the previous graph of, you know, years like this. The green square above the red bar in regards to budgets, Ms. Fretwell, and I think the past four years, you've had us in the black, and now you've sent us back into the red. I'm just kidding. I mean, it's the nature, it's just the nature of the beast. If you look at those revenues, and I'm concerned about the consolidated tax revenue, what's the trend there for that to be so low? I mean, the unemployment rate's down, people are building houses, people are buying stuff. I mean, without a real deep examination of why that's down so far, I mean, Ms. Fretwell, do you mind if I ask through the Mayor, Mr. Vincent that question?
Go ahead. If I may, for the record, Mark Vincent, I think one of the issues is, in a normal business cycle, you would expect sales tax to grow roughly at the rate of population growth plus inflation. Inflation, as you know, is down. Population growth for us is moderate. One of the things that affects our consolidate tax, though rather significantly, some estimate by as much as 25%, is tourism. And so tourism can have a big impact on that sales tax number, and for whatever reason, right now, it's off about 200 basis points from what we have been experiencing. So, and I, all the indicators that we're seeing is that's probably a trend we might see for another year.
Okay.
So, but that's the best explanation I can give you at this point.
But we'll take that.
Yeah.
I mean, 3% is good compared to the, when it was bottoming out.
Yeah.
And Vanetta and I were just talking about the fact that the revenue that we received from that source exceeds, has exceeded the peak from, I believe the peak was in 2007? 2007? So we've exceeded the peak, and so, and it's a big number. It's over 50% of our revenue, and so 3% of 50% of our revenue is a lot of money. So, thank goodness for it, is the way I look at it. But we do have to remember that it's volatile, and I think that's what Mark is saying. You know, as the economy shifts, people get a little nervous, consumer confidence goes down, that number goes down. There are other parts of our revenue portfolio that don't fluctuate quite as rapidly and have longer periods of time for changes to set in.
Okay.
And so, those are our stabilizing revenues against, you know, the ones that are a little more volatile. So, I think it's important that we look at all of it together. You know, this budget is a slightly larger budget than the peak budget before the recession. So the peak budget for the general fund before the recession was around 528. We didn't spend it that year. We actually came in under budget that year because we knew we were in deep trouble. But the point is, is that at that point, we had an authorized funding level of around $528 million. Now we're at 534. So, when you look at it that way, we're almost 10 years into this, and we're at about the same budget level as we were 10 years ago.
Yeah.
It's a really interesting dilemma to be in, and it has, can have unintended consequences, like some of the charts we showed you today. It's not like the demands for the services have gone down. They haven't actually. I was just making some notes off of the chart that Vanetta showed you. We've had expansions in the public safety area, fire stations, fire staff, new units deployed, new service delivery, deployment models. Same thing for detention and enforcement. I mean, we're handling a lot more people in our facility, and we're doing a partnership with North Las Vegas in that. There's just, it's a very different model than what we were looking at eight, nine years ago. We've also had expansion, tremendous expansion, in trails, bike lanes, parks, sewer collector system, our signals in our road lane miles. All have expanded, but the revenue's the same. And I will tell you, I distinctly remember giving a presentation to the Governor when he first got in, when the state was dealing with this recession, and we had the same list then because we had had such a huge run-up to that recession that when the bottom started dropping out on the revenues, we had already built out so much stuff to meet the needs of the population. Population grew by 3% in this same period of time. I mean, it's, there's just a continuous growth curve for us, which is a blessing, really. We could be somewhere else where population was going down, businesses were leaving, and all those other things, but we are constrained. And I do think that that creates quite a bit of a challenge, and that leads me to say something. Putting these budgets together is not easy. It's really not easy. It takes hard work by all our employees and the departments that they're in to really look at what they're doing, why they're doing it, what's important about it, and do we still need to keep doing it? That is, it sounds easy, it's not easy, because every line item we've ever approved has a constituency. Every single line item had somebody or something we were serving. So when we reevaluate those programs every year and look at what we can do without, we know that that could impact a person or a thing in that process, and I think we shouldn't let that be lost in these two-hour conversations once a year. I'd also like to thank Vanetta and her team and Mark for putting this budget together. I mean, this was a hard budget to put together. It's hard for me to stand up here and tell you that we have a deficit budget. After two years of not having a deficit budget, it's really hard to stand up here and say we have a slight deficit budget. But we also don't want to overreact to underperforming revenues when we have sufficient reserves to be able to handle a $3 million deficit. That only goes so far. I'd also like to thank Jorge, because I'll tell you what, he got blood out of a turnip this year. I mean, we gave him about $3 million, and he was able to cobble together a whole lot of savings in other places to be able to get some much-needed projects underway throughout the city in each and every one of your wards, and keep the ones that we had already approved going. So hats off to you, Jorge, and your team in Public Works. I'd like to say thanks to these gentlemen to my left who do an incredible day, incredible job every day to make us well-run and have a strong national reputation as a result of it. I will tell you this, that I think we built a budget that meets the demands of the citizenry this year. We take that citizen survey very seriously each and every year, and we hit it out of the park for our size city. I mean, to be 20 percentage points ahead of other major metropolitan areas, outperforming them so much that they had to put us in the category of 250 population and above because we so blew out the competition at the 500,000 and above population cities, tells you something. That's our employees. That's their dedication to this community. That's your leadership, talking through those citizen surveys, and we need to keep our services up for them, to keep those scores high, because that's what they expect now. Not easy to do, but we're going to keep trying. And I will tell you this, that even though we're presenting a $3.1 million deficit budget in the general fund today, between now and when we file the finished budget, the final budget, we're going to continue to work to try and reduce our deficit any way we can, as long as it's smart and it doesn't hurt us long-term. And through the course of fiscal year 17, we'll continue to do the same thing, just like Vanetta presented earlier. Even though we projected revenues high, we've underrun our expenses this year to date, we anticipate finishing the year in the black. We will try and do that again next year and still live up to your expectations and the expectations of our community for the services that they deserve and command. So, with that, Mayor and Council, happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'd just like to say thank you to everybody over here who's worked really hard to build this budget and to do right by our citizens and to follow your lead in making this a great city. So with that, I'll close and take any questions.
Well, we thank you all very much and know the effort, but probably not the boots on the ground as much as you are in the hours and not sleeping because you think you forgot something. I'm a big advocate for revenue estimates low, expense high, the other way around, and then you're happy at the end. Hopefully, we keep our reserves at the level. That's something I think it's incredible that you've been able to maintain that, and I know that's the future. And we certainly know the efforts on all, part of all staff, and then looking at a decrement to look at the future budget, that's a tough thing after knowing we were coming out of what we thought we knew would be slow, but we didn't realize the problems with the property tax and CPI. So, let's, any, yes, I saw Councilman, Mayor, pro temp?
Yeah, I wasn't actually done yet when Betsy went into her dissertation, but she was so excited to get it out. No, Betsy, you've done a fabulous job. All of you have, your executive staff, all the directors and assistant directors, and it is the employees, they've done a wonderful, wonderful job, especially with those citizen surveys. I'm very excited about that. But I want to talk about a couple of things. Jorge, in your presentation on the capital improvement stuff, you mentioned the fuel revenue indexing, and I want to highlight that because I think a lot of the leadership come November, when it's on the ballot and the voters get to decide, is going to come from the five mayors that meet on a regular basis. Mayor Goodman, I think that is such a key group of Southern Nevada leaders who understand the importance of fuel revenue indexing and what it is doing for this community. I mean, forget the jobs for a minute, but the much-needed infrastructure that Southern Nevada has needed for a long time and continues to need. Betsy, you briefly mentioned our budget levels are about the same from 10 years ago. Yes, look at the population, how much it's gone up, especially in the northwest. We haven't slowed down because of the recession. We felt a bump, and the foreclosure crisis, and we moved on. I think the, I honestly, well, I'm going to feel good for a minute and Polly Anish, that hopefully the legislature will actually take a serious look at this property tax issue. Every government that relies upon that property tax in this state is getting hammered, or is going to be hammered. And I think that's significant that that changes. Again, I'm looking towards that mayor's council, the five mayors of Southern Nevada, to get together and demonstrate that needed leadership. And maybe it's the rest of the state as well, Mayor, the rest of the municipalities through the Nevada League. I'm not quite sure that's the answer, but it's got to change. And so it's going to be interesting where this goes, and I will be hopefully optimistic about the next legislative session regarding that. And hopefully it gets fixed or amended or changed, and we won't be having these conversations anymore. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. I know you've got something. Wait till her ward gets going with you and LV Medical.
We're waiting for that. I want to say that was a very nice thank you, Betsy, that you made to your staff and everybody. I hang around a lot with people in the county, and lots of times, we get criticized. I want to tell you, I brag, I brag to everybody when this subject's brought up about use of funds, that here within the city, we have done so well in keeping within the budget. And I say that we were the leaders as far as breaking out of that deep hole we went into. So you should be very proud of yourself and all of the people with whom you work. And I wanted to ask a question. Was the last budget I got from the Fire Department, was that the last budget, or have any changes been made? I did get a copy of the budget, didn't I, or was it a proposed?
The, what's included new for Fire is six firefighter paramedics for a new rescue at the old Upland Station, Upland and Jones, and six for the 10-hour ILS units.
Could I have that with the new additions?
Yes.
I mean, not now, but if you-
They should be the same, Councilwoman, from what we briefed you on a couple- They should be the same, Councilwoman, from what we briefed you on a couple of weeks ago, but I'll get you another copy, so you can have it in your file.
And then the other thing I wanted to say, Jorge, you remind me of an assistant my husband had, he was magnificent. I called him the great puzzle maker, and that's what you are. You go to Jorge, and the monies aren't there, but he knows of a little place here that maybe federal funding might have, or a little place there. And my husband had an assistant like that. Oh, we need a seven footer here, or we need, really. And I always used to say to him, Mark, how do you get this beautiful puzzle picture worked out? That's the way I feel about you, Jorge. You just do such a magnificent job, as I believe some of the others have said. So thank you very much, and everybody who works so hard.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, at this point, then.
Mayor, could I just?
Wait, wait, he's pregnant with the thought, I see it. Go for it.
Are we going to vote on this?
That's where I was headed, but I thought you wanted to say something.
I'm going to vote yes. I'm going to vote yes.
No.
For two reasons.
I'm going to have a coronary right here.
First of all, I believe that the 0.2% cap on property tax is a fiction that we've created in order to scare the legislature. It's predicated upon the CPI falling to 0.1%. At the end of February, it was 2.6% year-over-year, which is a four-year increase, a four-year record high of inflation. And the 0.2 cap is predicated on inflation actually falling to near zero. That's not happening. The second reason is because of the demonstrated integrity and management ability on Betsy's team's part, in the face of extreme government adversity, and extreme government management adversity, which we can define in Nevada as budgets, revenue being flat. They have consistently managed the process over the course of the year, and brought things in at the end of the year flat. And so, let's go.
Okay, and I would like to ask the two Bobs, were you in the legislature, serving this great state, when these caps were put in place?
Yes, ma'am, we felt that twice inflation would be an adequate reserve against a worst-case scenario. I didn't.
I was there, Your Honor, and I voted for the initial bill for the 3% and the 8%. Then an amendment was brought in by parties unknown in the majority side, that they were fearful that there might be, just might be, too much money taken in somehow. So therefore, all these other little gadgets were put in. And so it started out as a simple bill, and ended up as something that was a lot more complex, that had far-reaching circumstances. We just didn't know. It's typical unintended consequences. So I wouldn't go so far as to say, or agree with Councilman Beers, that somehow there's a fiction created here, and all of this, and scare tactics being, because I've used those scare tactics before, and I don't think I feel scared enough to use them this year. I think we have a problem. We need to fix, and it's going to take the legislators' help. And, you know, along with other people who helped shape the whole opinion, like the newspapers around here, if we can get them to focus on, you know, that stuff, other than the stadium. So hopefully, we can make some progress. And that legislature starts in just, what, seven, eight months? So that's how close we are. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, yes, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to say something. Well, I have it on my mind, it isn't this year's budget, but you know how we helped the Westside School. The school district has money for building Wauston Elementary, coming in about 2018, 19, but they have that budget set aside. And that is an historic school in many, many ways, particularly the architecture of it, compared to the way they're building the new schools. And it's such a sad thing to me to think they're going to tear down that old type, tear down the whole building, and you're having these large classrooms, down to where you're only supposed to have 18 in a class, you know, except you never have 18, you have about 28, and all that other stuff. I just wondered if maybe you might want to look at that, since the school district's already put that money aside. It's one of the schools ranked in their list, and maybe with just a little more, that could be preserved as a school of that particular era, which was just shortly after the Westside area. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you. Sorry, I popped in, I didn't want to hold up the vote for Mr. Beers.
Well, anyway, I'm going to let you make the motion, and ask you to make that. I mean, my heart really is having a difficult time. If you would, Councilman Beers, would you like to make the motion?
My pleasure, Your Honor. I am hopeful that we approve this budget, and have these guys set it up to Carson City as quickly as they can.
Watch this, everybody at home, this is a small miracle. Yes, sir. Did you want to say anything, Councilman Coffin? No more. All right, there's a motion, please vote, and please post, and thank you, Ms. Appleyard, thank you, Mr. Zerantes, unanimous, hard work. Thank you all for all that you do, and our staff. Everybody made this possible. Congratulations. Wonderful. Oh, my goodness, I'm breathing today. Okay, we will now move to set date. On any appeals filed or required public hearings, I instruct the city clerk to set public hearing dates, and appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings, endangered building nuisance litter abatements. Thank you very much. And now we will go to our second and final citizen participation public comment. During this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speakers allowed, may be limited. Anybody wishing to speak under this portion of the agenda? Hearing unseeing none, we'll move on to 92. Council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. We will start with Councilwoman Tarkanian.
On April 16th, from 10:00 AM to noon, we will have a shredding gathering at Opportunity Village for Ward One document shredding event, or any ward that wants to come. The Opportunity Village has so far obtained the most papers and things to be shredded, so we thought that would have another one there. Residents can bring up to five boxes or bundles per car, and for more information, please contact my office, 702-229-6405. And Ward One is having coffee with the mayor on Tuesday, April 19th. We'll be joining Mayor Goodman at the Coffee Pub, and it's located at 2800 West Sahara Avenue, Suite 2A. We will be there, the mayor, myself, and others on staff from 8:00 to 9:30 in the morning, and it's always fun to have the mayor there. It's good to see everybody crowd her for questions. And then I just wanted to put a plug in for the Neighborhood Partnership Program. The MPF grant application process is still open, so the grants are available for all wards for neighborhood events, beautification projects, signage, and safety. So the neighborhood groups are encouraged to apply for up to 5,000 in grants that must be matched by in-kind donations, cash, and volunteer labor, which really isn't hard to achieve, after you include all the time you spend planning and spending to go out and buy things and build. The deadline to apply is Monday, April 18th, so anybody in any ward, please make that application. For more information, please contact Maria Castillo Couch in Community Services at 702-229-6681. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Anthony, you go next, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to have a busy Saturday on April 9th. We're going to start in the morning with a shredding event at the Canyon Ridge Christian Church at 6200 West Sloan Mountain Road, from 10:00 AM to noon. You can bring up to five boxes. We will have lots of staff there. You pull up, give us your documents, we'll shred it, and you can move on to your next event. So please come out, it's a great way to get rid of your documents, so you're not a victim of identity theft. Then we're going to have our first family bluegrass music festival, that same day, from 10:30 AM to 6:00 PM. So when you're done shredding in the morning, come on over for some bluegrass music. It's going to be at Durango Hills Park, which is behind the Durango Hills Y, at 3521 North Durango. We're going to have some great bluegrass bands. I'm trying to get Councilman Beers to bring his banjo out, but he will not commit. So we're just going to have all these other bands out there. We're supposed to have handmade candles, and jewelry, and home decor, and food trucks, and barbecue. We're going to have a beer garden out there, so you can have a beer. It's going to be a lot of fun, weather permitting, and please come out on that day, and that's what I have, Mayor.
Thank you, and I just got a notification here. Apparently, this afternoon, everybody's out at the T-Mobile Arena, which is opening today or tonight. And the Toshiba speaker just thanked, in quotes, "the city leaders of Las Vegas," for the vision to help build the T-Mobile Arena.
Uh-oh.
Look at the faces on others. No, this is not April Fools. This is real, it happened. So thank you all for all that you do, and for your part in making Las Vegas all that it can be. So, I mean, it's a fact.
I only see the additional steam that created as increasing the humidity on our first 80-degree day of the year. Councilman Anthony, we're just stringing you along on the banjo thing. We're going to have Beers with Beers on Tuesday, April 19th, 2016, 5:30 to 7:30. This is our favorite Beers with Beers of the year, I think, because it's out on the patio at the Angel Park Clubhouse, where they have live music in the spring, and it is just typically gorgeous weather overlooking the rose gardens, and the teas, and the fairways, and it's great fun. So we would invite you out.
And it's lucky it's not next week, because next week, we're supposed to have a little rain, but that's the week after.
The dry week.
So that's great.
The dry week, yeah. And so invite everyone out, bring your problems, because I am the Ward Two Complaint Department. Ward Two walkers, every Tuesday and Thursday morning at 7:00. We just went to summer hours, yes, our graphic does say 7:00. And we go out there each Tuesday and Thursday morning, and take a couple of laps around the gorgeous 8/10 of a mile course through the desert landscaping, which today is like exploding with cactus flowers. If you all know, you probably do, cactus flowers, I guess that's how they arrive, they explode. And we have serious explosions. Last week, featuring two separate sightings of a very large coyote. So keep your dogs on a leash, but do come out and visit us 7:00 Tuesday and Thursday morning. Next Coffee with the Councilman is all the way into May. May 6th, we'll be out at the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf, which is right across from the Costco gas station at Summerlin. By the way, some good news for residents of the west part of Las Vegas, that Costco gas station is going to add another row of pumps, which is actually badly needed, because it sometimes backs up clear out onto the street. So we would invite everyone out to meet us at the Coffee Bean and Tea Leaf on Friday and May 6th. On this day in music history, 51 years ago today, I guess we age all of ourselves, Keith Richards began writing Satisfaction. The Stones were playing in Florida, and he was in a hotel room that night. He tells the story about the rough version of the initial riff that he recorded that night, and then the next morning, he listened back to it. He said, "There's about two minutes of acoustic guitar before you could hear him drop the pick and then snore for the next 40 minutes." It's kind of reminded of the audio tape of Councilman Coffin and I coming up with the puppy mill bill, and some snoring at the end of that, too. So that's all we have for Ward Two, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
Sounds pretty good, and a lot of fun. All right, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Pirate Fest is back at Lorenzi Park, April 8 through the 10th. The Pirates are returning to Lorenzi Park here in Las Vegas, Nevada. The event will be bigger and better. This is a hands-on, family-oriented event sponsored in partnership with the City of Las Vegas. It will feature music, entertainers, vendors, food, games, activities, and more. If you would like more information on the Pirate Fest, please go and log on to www.piratefestlv.com for more information. The next Coffee with the Councilman will take place on tomorrow, April 7th, so please come on out to Starbucks at 1925 North Martin Luther King Boulevard. I will be there with my staff to have coffee with the constituents of Ward Five, so please come on out tomorrow, April 7th. In addition to that, April 19th and 20th, the Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater is taking place at the Smith Center for the Performing Arts. Two performances of the Alvin Ailey American Dance Theater. Come out to see the incomparable performers as they bring you pulse racing thrills of contemporary dance. Performances will take place on Tuesday, April 19th, and Wednesday, April 20th. Please visit thesmithcenter.com for more information. And of course, as always, you may follow me on all of my social media outlets, which is Facebook, Twitter, and of course, feel free to log on to my website at lasvegasnevada.gov/wardfive to log on to my e-newsletter that comes out weekly as well. And that is an update from Ward Five. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Mayor. This, I have just one item today, and it has to do with today. So if someone is watching this program, and it is not April 6th, at about 3:00 in the afternoon, ignore this announcement. But in fact, we're all invited to the renaming ceremony this afternoon for Bob Stupack of Baltimore Avenue. So Bob Stupack Avenue will be created in about two hours. We already voted on that, but today, we're hanging up the signs. And it's right next to the Stratosphere, which I still like to call Stupack Tower. We're all invited, the mayor and I are going to be speaking, and I'm sure there's always room for others to speak who wish to talk about it, but there'll be food and beer, and whatever else goes with food. So come on down to, at 5:00 or sooner, and the streets blocked off, we're going to have a good time. Nevada's Stupack's paying the bill. Thank you.
You're paying for it?
Nevada.
Oh.
Nevada's Stupack is paying the bill. Also, the Stratosphere Company, the American Casino, I believe is the name of it, they're paying, and so it's going to be a big hurrah in memory of the great Polish maverick.
Thank you. All right, Councilmen, who did I leave out? My mayor pro tems stills to go. You're the last of the Maligans, as they say.
Thank you, and Chief Freeman, thank you for sticking around, because you're going to like what I'm going to show on the screen now. Yeah, take a look at this. Let me get it up. That is Lieutenant Scott Barney in the dunk tank at Tulie Springs for last Saturday's Spring Fling Celebration, where we partner with Clark County Family Services to connect foster families and foster kids. And we had over 10,000 people out there, and he was representing you, Chief Freeman. So I just want you to know that all of detention and enforcement, he's the man, and his daughters really got him good, so.
I was going to say, who hit the target?
He brought his daughters. There was a line for him. There was less of a line for me, and more of a line for him. So I just wanted to throw that out, so Chief Freeman could get a kick out of that. Thanks for sticking around, you bet. And on to fun stuff, in Centennial Hills. We are back with our movie series at the Centennial Hills Amphitheater. You can certainly go online to the city's new website, lasvegasnevada.gov/ward6, to find out when all these movies are, but there's a good list of them. First one is April 22nd. It's Inside Out. It is free, bring your families, bring your blankets, bring your popcorn, I think I'm giving away popcorn, while supplies last. So come on out, I will be out there, and we'll have, we'll start the season off right. So those are the first four movies coming up. Centennial Hills Amphitheater, I think everybody knows where that is, at Centennial Hills Park, the Butterfly Park, not the, no, it is the Dinosaur Park and the Butterfly Park, I get them confused. Anyway, a lot of shredding opportunities in Las Vegas coming up as well, both in Councilwoman's Ward, Councilman Anthony's Ward, and certainly in Ward Six, as our shredding event Saturday, April 23rd, from 10:00 AM to noon, at the Centennial Hills Active Adult Center, in the back. If you're driving around front, you're in the wrong spot, but we will have troop number 555 out there directing traffic. So bring your boxes, bring that stuff that you don't want to get stolen for your identity theft, and we'll get it taken care of for you. And Mayor and Council, in our continued relationship with Nevada Childseekers, we do have a missing young lady. Her name is Jennifer Austin Dorf. She's 15 years old, 5'4", 125 pounds. She was last seen around March 14th, wearing glasses and a minor facial acne. Jennifer was last seen in the area of Bonanza and Pecos. So please, if anyone knows the whereabouts of this young lady, please contact Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers, it's 702-458-7009. And likewise, I'm easy to find, you can just Google me, and I'm sure you'll find something on me, but certainly on my Facebook page, Twitter, lasvegasnevada.gov/ward6, or you can do the old-fashioned way, and actually pick up that telephone and dial, we don't dial anymore, do we, 229-6154, and we'll go from there. So, thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers.
Thank you, everyone. Wonderful meeting. We thought we'd be here late, but here we are, it's quarter 10:03, so don't waste your afternoon. Staff, thank you. IT, thank you. Everybody, thank you very much, we appreciate it. And our next Council- And our next council meeting will be at 9:00 a.m. here in Chambers on April 20th, and our city council meeting is adjourned.